The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the July 17th, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. I'd like to ask Attorney Powers to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, and thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez Young. Would you please provide the proof of publication?
Good morning, Madam Chair. The notice for the July 17th, 2025 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on July 4th, 2025. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Doc's under "Proof of Publication."
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Brewer.
Good morning.
Good morning. You were going to start us off with a compliance inspection report. He's here. He's in the corner.
Good morning. Yes, Mr. McFadden will come to the podium and provide us with this update.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, Members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer. Florida State Statute 1001.212 requires the Department of Education's Office of Safe Schools to develop and adopt a Florida School Safety Compliance Inspection Report to document compliance or noncompliance with school safety requirements mandated by law or rule and adherence to established school safety best practices to evaluate the safety, security, and emergency response of the school. The Office of Safe Schools completes the report while conducting unannounced inspections of all public and charter schools, while in session and investigate reports of noncompliance with school safety requirements. At the end of each quarter, the Office of Safe Schools provides a report to the district school superintendent and the school safety specialist, identifying the number and percentage of schools, including charter schools, inspected or re-inspected during that quarter, and the number and percentage of schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies. The compliance inspection contained confidential information. Therefore, to maintain the safety and security of the district, the report does not contain detailed information. The 2024-2025 third or fourth quarterly report contains the following. For Marion County Public Schools, number of schools inspected were eight. The percentage of schools inspected or re-inspected was 14.8%. The number of inspected schools with no school safety requirements or deficiencies were four, and the percentage of inspected schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies was at 50%. The current report did not capture the schools that were re-inspected. A total of additional, five additional schools were re-inspected, with a no finding for all prior compliance issues resolved, or compliance issues was resolved.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Board, any questions or concern on this item? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. McFadden. We appreciate you being here with us this morning. Dr. Brewer, we're ready to hand it off for self-funded health insurance plan.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Boston Ellis will introduce our guest today.
Good morning. Chair Conrad, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer. Today, we will continue the discussion on the presentation for 2025 updates and the 2026 funding projections. Stacy Roth, who is our Coordinator of Benefits, is here with us today, as well as a return appearance of Ms. Laurel Lingle from Gallagher. We are still working through our financial information, and I know there was some concern about what we can afford versus what's required by the statute. And we are looking at that. But again, please reflect on the fact that we're a fiscal year in, and our benefits is a calendar year. So we've got to mesh together what that looks like in order to determine what it is. We actually need to maintain that fund balance that is required by the statute. So without any further ado, I'll present to you Ms. Laurel Lingle from Gallagher.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, Board Members, Dr. Brewer. Happy to be here again this morning to give an update on the self-funded health plan. We do have some new numbers with claims in through May. Our prior presentation included claims through March, so we will be speaking to some of those. I'll also be discussing some of the highlights of the wellness program at the end as well. So we will recap June's presentation, discuss the legislative updates that have come since the last presentation, give that funding projection, talk about some of our RFPs and audit timelines, and then we'll conclude with wellness. Again, the benefits team, Stacy Roth is here with us today, myself, and then Kelly Davis, Danielle Angela Hooper assist, and then we have our actuary Sally Donovan, who puts together the numbers for us each month. A recap of the June presentation, we didn't want to spend too much time on this, but just as a reminder, we did two RFPs this year, one for the TPA services for the self-funded health plan, and one for pharmacy benefit manager, or PBM services, also for the health plan. Those were both awarded to Florida Blue. We are currently finalizing the contracting, so you should have that for signature in the August or at the August meeting. We do have the value choice provider that we are looking to update those benefits for 11 of 2026. This will provide several services at no cost for employees on Plans 1, 3, and 4. There are two locations in Marion County. Again, that will be for 1126 Benefit Design and as part of the contracting, so we'll be able to talk about where those specific locations are once we have that contract signed. And then we are required to increase the deductible on Plan 2, which is the HSA-compatible plan, to maintain the IRS regulations. Again, that will be on the 1126 Benefit Design. Stop-loss, we will be going to stop-loss RFP. We have started that process. It is currently embedded with Florida Blue and their sister company, USI. We are looking to add a rider for gene therapy. We discussed some of those items last month, but these are for medications that are extremely costly and would help negate any risk associated with those diseases and the associated medications. And then this is new. This came out with the new passage of legislation, a couple of items that affect the self-funded or funded health plan, as well as some of the other benefits that we offer. So the dependent care flex spending account. So this allows for employees that have children that are 13 and under to set aside funds tax-free to help pay for daycare or aftercare. The amount has not increased in nearly 30 years. So for the first time in 30 years, they have increased the amount that employees can set aside to pay for those services. So we will be, you know, monitoring that and ensuring that that is approved fully so that we can offer that during open enrollment this year. And then telemedicine with an HSA-compatible plan. So our Plan 2 is HSA-compatible, meaning that any service that is related to a health condition outside of wellness must apply to the deductible first. So on Plans 1, 3, and 4, there is a $10 copay for members to use telemedicine through Teladoc. On Plan 2, it is basically the market rate, which is $55 to use telemedicine. The legislation is indicating that we will be able to either match or remove that cost for those that are on Plan 2. So we are working with Florida Blue. Their attorneys are reviewing the legislation to confirm that they follow those same guidelines. It may have to be for 2027, depending on how quickly we get that confirmed, whether we can offer it for 2026. So we are monitoring that as recent legislation has passed. So back into some of the health plan updates, again, we have new numbers through May. So we did list what we showed you through March. So that's your first bullet, those expenses through March total there, and then expenses through May. You can see that the increase is fairly proportional per month to what we anticipated to see based on through March. We do always focus on those large claims, as they are a smaller number of claims, but they are a larger number to the total impact of claim expenses. We do have the two claimants that have exceeded the stop-loss. Those are the two claimants that we spoke to in March, so that has not changed. We have had a slight change in the reimbursement. So when members do go over the stop-loss, the $400,000, then the stop-loss carrier is reimbursing the district for any claims over that number. So you can see what the district has been reimbursed for those two members. We do have six additional claimants that have met 50% of the stop-loss or have claims over $200,000. We are always monitoring those as we anticipate whether or not they will hit that $400,000. Again, just to reference back to 2024, we only had four claimants in the entire year that hit the stop-loss of $375,000. So we are seeing some additional claims and some additional high-cost claimants, but continuing to review those as new numbers come in. I know that this is very small, but this is your 24-month plan performance. It is essentially looking at the number of subscribers, so that is essentially employees, the number of members. We sometimes refer to this as the number of heartbeats that are on the plan. So it is your employees plus any dependents that they have covered. What the claims are for medical, claims are for capitation. There are some providers that are not paid on a claims basis, but they are paid a per-member-per-month cost. And then we have the pharmacy claims and total claims. So you can see down at the bottom, we've got the prior rolling 12, per-member-per-month, per-employee-per-month, and then the current rolling 12. So you can see that we are experiencing some additional claims costs. Last year, or prior rolling 12, total claim $752 compared to $886 currently. So when we look at rate projections, plan funding for 2026, again, as Ms. Boston Ellis said, I know that you are budgeting for your fiscal year, which is July through June. We are projecting based on a calendar year and plan year, which would be January 2026 through December of 2026. We spoke last month about medical trend and pharmacy trend, so what is the cost of doing business in the medical field? As new medications come, new procedures are available, what is the increased cost to do business in the world of medicine? So medical trend is about 8.7%, with pharmacy trend being at 11.4%. You will see that our claims experience has decreased a little bit. We're calling for around 10.6%. When I presented last month, it was 11.8. The reason I point that out is when you average those two numbers there, medical trend is at 10.5%, which is really in line with where your claims are falling. Now, we don't like to see numbers that high, and we have not been seeing it that much in the past. However, it is just a good point that the claims are not so out of control, they're really just aligning with where medical trend lives. You can see, though, when we compare year-to-date, 2025 to 2024, we're running at about 20% over current for medical claims, 24% for pharmacy claims. I also point out pharmacy rebates. So you see, those have increased 61%. You can see that as a positive. We are getting more rebates back because we cover more brand medication. So while the cost that we are paying out for the additional brand coverage has increased, we are seeing those additional rebates as well. And that was also part of the negotiation that you'll see in the pharmacy RFP. And then just a note, we do calculate this into our projections. This is not just specific to the School Board. This happens across all plans, and that is as more people, you know, meet their deductible towards the end of the year, claims do increase. But also, your stop-loss reimbursements may increase if people meet that deductible. So just some considerations as we look at what the projections will be. So funding recommendations, if we did not do anything to increase funding for the plan in 2026, the self-funded health plan would lose roughly $8 million. This is down from last month's projection. It was projected to lose about $8 million. So again, moving in the right direction, still higher than we've seen in the past, but some positives from the numbers that we saw previously. As a reminder, you are required to maintain at least 60 days reserve in your self-funded health plan. So we did the little chart in the bottom left that shows what one month of premium would look like and what two months of premium would look like. So required to maintain at least $12 million in the self-funded health plan for that 60 days. Most of the public entities that we work with like 90 to 120 days of reserves available, so you can see what that would look like as well. So again, slight improvement with claims through May. We were projecting last month instead of that 10.6, 11.8. So if you didn't want to lose any funding and stay net neutral in the self-funded health plan, it was calling for 11.8%. We feel more comfortable with 7%. So if you adopted a 7% increase, the projected loss would be 2.3, but you would still be maintaining that 120-day reserve in the self-funded health plan with that loss. You can see the annual total Board and employee contribution, so this is combined here with what the employees contribute, either by buying up from the free plan or if they have dependents on the coverage. The projected total for the Board would be just over $63 million of that 70.4. This is just breaking down all of those numbers that I just showed. So this would be if you assumed a 10.6% increase and funded that way. So you can see what the medical claims would be, pharmacy claims anticipated at our stop-loss premiums, the administrative fees that we pay to Florida Blue, and then some small internal expenses, so you can see total cost there. And if we funded at that entire increase, again, essentially a net-neutral self-funded reserve. On the next slide, though, is again where our projections and our recommendations would be at the 7% increase. So similar with the medical claims and pharmacy claims, your stop-loss premium and admin fees, but then the funding difference would result in that $2.3 million loss from the claims fund. I'm going to stop there briefly. Are there any questions on the new claims numbers, the projections?
Board, any questions? Yes. Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lingle, for being here. My only question, I'm just trying to look at, and I think I'm seeing it correct on the chart on slide, I have no idea what slide number this is, the one that you're, we're looking at right now, I believe, where it does show the 7% recommendation. If I look across the board, 2022, that looks like we did a 4%. 2023, we did an 8%, and then last year, we did 4% again. Just for trend purposes, I was just trying to see, it potentially looks like we go less, and then we go more, and then we go less, and then we go more. And so grateful that we've been able to, or potentially, well, nevertheless, I think I'm right on what I'm looking at, if you want to correct me on that. But 7% sounds better than 8%. Obviously, Ms. Boston Ellis had her disclaimer at the very beginning of this because she knew what questions I was going to ask. And so I understand the challenge of going from a fiscal year to a calendar year and how those numbers have to mesh, and that's a lot more complicated than we can do just with pencil and paper. So nevertheless, that's what I'm seeing as far as a trend of what we've had to fund this on an annual basis, that potentially next year will be an under-year, where we are more like that 3% to 4% range, hopefully. Is that...
Yes, yes. So you can see across the board at the bottom, and great point, 2022, we funded at 4%. The following year, we funded at 8, then 4, then 2, and back to 7. So yes, I think that there are always years where the claims, you know, may, the experience may be higher than we were anticipating. We're monitoring those at this time to see if there's anything that we can change to ensure that we are, you know, funding appropriately, but that we can get those numbers back more in that 4% range that is just more comfortable for the Board to be planning for. And also valid point, our numbers are based on a calendar year. You're looking at fiscal year that, you know, covers both of those. So sometimes it is difficult to do the math to ensure that half of this fiscal year is actually already budgeted for in last year, and then half of next fiscal year would be part of the projection.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
No. Well, I'll just add, I appreciate the recommendation to do 7%, and that's essentially a 7% increase on the premium price, right?
Correct.
So for an employee who's using the program for just themselves, and they're on the free program, there would be no change for that employee, right?
And I believe that the thought is that the cost would not change for the employees at all, regardless of whether they have family coverage or any of the plans, that the Board would be absorbing the increase.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, because I did not receive it that way. So I appreciate that clarification. So there will not be an increase in cost to the employee. We're keeping that a net-neutral price, which you did say, and essentially, we're going to absorb that cost as the district, which is why we're going to see that loss.
And I would, I would let Dr. Boston Ellis confirm that, but that, I believe, is the intention.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Laurel.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification, because something that I continue to be very proud of and grateful for is that we are providing the best services that we possibly can and absorbing the costs of that largely along the way. And the insurance, medical insurance is just tough across the board on all of us. But it almost continues to astound me, as I said earlier to you before this meeting started, that each year, we continue to be able to find a way to do this for our employees, and that really means a lot.
I would agree. I would also like to point out, I think there are very few districts that can say that they have maintained the cost for the employees that it has been over the past years while improving benefits, which is what the district has been doing the last several years. So again, we don't like to see the numbers increase like we have, but you have done such a great job funding it appropriately in the past. In a year where claims are increased, the plan can still function and maintain without passing that along to the employees and not having to take the entire increase, knowing where the budget stands.
Absolutely, and it's still expensive, you know? It just is. But we've worked really hard together to try to control that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Lingle, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Excellent. So just some RFP and audit timelines. So in 2025 for 2026, again, we did the TPA services for the self-funded health plan, PBM for prescription drug, and then the stop-loss. Stop-loss is every year, so we don't list that every year, but it is something that we have to do each year. In 2026 for 2027, we'll be doing the Vision RFP, that is currently with Humana. The Employee Assistance Program, we are looking to see if we can direct-negotiate that contract and maintain or reduce the cost of that plan. If we are not able to do that, we will go to RFP for those services. That is currently through Aetna Resources for Living. And then some of the audits that we do as a requirement, but also just good fiduciaries of your plan, the dependent eligibility audit. So this ensures that those that are enrolled in the plan as dependents are truly eligible for the plan, so that the district is not paying claims for those who may not be eligible. We do, Risk Management does a great job upfront when people enroll, but things do change with dependence eligibility, and so it is an audit that we do every three years to ensure that they still qualify for the health plan. The PBM audit, since we do have a new contract for pharmacy services, we will be auditing that. Again, this just ensures that the plan is paying according to how the contract is written. And then a medical claims audit, same for the 2026 plan year. How the contract is written with Florida Blue, how they are to be paying claims is how those claims are actually being funded. And we will finish with just a recap of the wellness programs that were offered during the last school year, as well as look at some that will be offered in the future. So these are the ongoing wellness programs that we offer, the onsite biometric screenings. We have been doing this for 20-plus years. This is in partnership with Advent Health and their worksite wellness program. They go to each of our schools and several of the district locations to provide the screening, some education, and then the employees get a movie voucher as a little incentive for participating. We also offer the diabetes management program on an ongoing basis. We currently have about 250 members that are enrolled in that program. That is both employees and dependents that may be eligible if they are enrolled in the health insurance. Again, we partner with Advent Health for this. They do diabetes education, diabetes screenings, foot exam, eye exam. They get some nutrition counseling, and then they receive some of their medication and testing supplies at no cost when they finish the program. We offer several onsite group fitness classes throughout the district. This is always very popular with our employees. And then the pre-diabetes weight management program is a program that is offered in conjunction with Florida Blue, and employees can either receive a free year of Weight Watchers, or they can do one of several online programs. There's health coaching, there's check-ins, they receive food scales, Fitbits, activity trackers, to really help them along that weight loss journey. And again, this is trying to... And again, this is trying to prevent diabetes. So we're really looking for those people that either have prediabetes or have risk factors for developing diabetes down the road. Florida Blue will be doing a campaign, they said the beginning of, or at the end of August, the beginning of September, to invite employees that qualify for this program to participate. This last year, we offered a new initiative in partnership with Healthy Wage. So it is the $10,000 School Team Challenge. And this started in January, ran through April, and you can see we had 72 participants of 13 teams. And you can see some of the results there. By having at least 50 participants in this challenge, the district would have one winner of $1,500. So it's a nationwide challenge. The winning team could win $10,000. But then we, as a district, because we met that minimum participation, had a winning team of $1,500. We've got lots of alliteration here. This team must have been English teachers. The lovely, lively, laughing losers were the winning team. And so that team in Marion County won $1,500. But they actually ranked 11th overall in the entire nationwide challenge. So they did an incredible job. Again, this was the first time that we offered this, so we're hoping that other employees will see the success of this program and join us in January for that challenge. One of the things I like about this program is that it does have a cap on how much weight counts toward the loss. So it is really promoting healthy weight loss. They have challenges within the challenge for, you know, nutrition, fitness, drinking water, camaraderie in weight loss. So it really is a healthy and positive way to encourage employees to lose weight. So we'll be offering that again, starting in January. And then some of the other special initiatives that we work through, we partner with Radiology Associates to do the mammogram event every year in October. I know Ms. Throer was very integral, an integral part in getting this going. We did 53 exams this year. Again, we'll be having that in October. In addition to the 53 exams, I think the advertising of this initiative encourages lots of other people to schedule their mammogram, even if it's outside of the special event that we have. Again, ours is exclusive for MCPS employees on that one Saturday, but they do have other Saturdays that, you know, our employees are registering and getting scheduled for their mammogram. We brought back the step challenge again this year. So this is in partnership with the Marion County Hospital District. In the past, we had only done a 30-day challenge, so this was extended for essentially that entire fourth quarter, so August 1st till they left on holiday break. We had 62 teams with 1,100 participants. We had nearly 500 of those receive an individual prize, so that was based on an average step total through the entire challenge. And you can see, we had some team prizes in addition to those individual prizes. First place was our extremely competitive Marion after-school programs. Second place was Donellen High, and then third was Vanguard. And again, this is an average total number of steps divided by the number of employees that they had participating on those teams. We also did something different this year during the challenge. We did bi-weekly drawings for some little incentives just to keep people motivated through that entire challenge, so that seemed to help. 12 days of fitness, so we ran that again in conjunction with the end of the step challenge. We had, oh, I'm sorry, that is a repeat of the step challenge. I'll have to get those numbers to you. But this is always a fun challenge that we offer every year to the employees, 12 days. It goes along with the song. We do gift card drawings. And then triathlon month was in April, so we had nearly 1,800 submissions over the 26 days. It is broken down for the amount of mileage that you would do for an Ironman triathlon, so people can choose to either walk or run, they can choose to bike, they can choose to swim, they can do all three of those things. So we do daily drawings for those participants. And then we also do an overall winner. Anyone that completed the entire challenge was put into a drawing and received an incentive there. And then looking ahead for 2025, 2026, we will be coordinating with that Value Choice Provider that I spoke to earlier in the presentation to provide some additional wellness education. They have mental health programming and then chronic condition management. So we will be providing additional information, again, once that contract is signed, what that will look like for our employees, both onsite and then also throughout the district. They will be providing some services for us as well. And then tobacco cessation, the Swanee River AHEC is our partner that offers that. This will really be more of an advertisement of the community resource that's available. So they do tobacco cessation classes, both in person and virtually. They offer tobacco cessation products like patches, gum, lozenges. And so we'll just be making sure that the employees and their family members know of those resources available out in the community. And that is all I have today. If there are any additional questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lingle. That was a lot that you had to offer us today. Board, I open up for any closing comments or questions?
Okay, yes. Thank you, as always, for the great work that you do. I'm interested in knowing a little more about the mental health programming, if there is an employee that has their kids on their policy with us. We're just hearing more and more from students about the importance of maintaining their mental health and so on, and I was just wondering if they would be covered.
Yes. So a couple of ways they can be covered. They would have access through the Employee Assistance Program as a dependent of a school board or a school employee. And then unfortunately, I can't speak more to what the Value Choice Provider is going to be able to offer because the contract's not been signed. But once we are, we can discuss how that can impact both the employees and their family members and what youth might be available or eligible for.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Throer. Campbell, anything from you?
No, just thank you, appreciate it. I'm grateful that we've gotten it down to 7%. That's, you know, it sounds like, oh, just one percentage point, but that's a lot of money tied to just a percentage point. So I'm grateful for that and love the ideas of all the incentives. I guess the increases that we're having, it's really, you know, it's kind of like HIPAA related, not wanting to go there at all, but especially for seeing that the continued increases are related to preventable conditions. Certainly, there's things that are not preventable, broken bones, things like that, that you don't have any expectation that's going to occur. But if they are related to preventable issues like weight management, diabetes management, those kinds of things, then I can see even increasing those opportunities, however that might look, even if the board were to put in some kind of financial incentive for a Biggest Loser competition or whatever that looks like beyond just what you guys are trying to do now. I think a little bit, you know, say $5,000 for our Biggest Loser, that $5,000 could actually transform an entire school or district or department or something just based on the camaraderie and culture that it could bring with actually eating healthy and exercising. So.
Yeah, and I do believe that sometimes it's difficult to know, you know, the cost of covering preventive medications. We added a lot of brand medications in hopes that that would cause people to better manage their conditions. We're offering some of those initiatives. So what the end result is when you prevent a heart attack or a stroke because you better manage somebody's blood pressure or blood sugar previously. So yeah, I believe you're correct, there is a cost to prevention, but the hopes is that it eliminates some of those high-cost claims down the road.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Brewer, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, thank you. You just always make this topic seem so.
A little more interesting.
So, yeah, and it makes sense. So we appreciate that, and I agree with Dr. Campbell, the incentives are fun, and they will provide us a better quality of life. So thank you for those.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Lingle. We sure do appreciate you being here with us this morning.
All right. Thank you all.
Next up, we have Mr. Whitehouse, Strategic Plan Update Goal One.
What's that? Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that twice. Actually, I made a note. Thank you, Dr. Campbell and Ms. Throer. Is there any public comment for insurance? Okay, seeing none, I need to go back. Also, any on, yes, is there any public comment on the compliance inspection? Okay, seeing none. I apologize, Mr. Whitehouse, but welcome to the podium.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Conra, board members, and Dr. Brewer. We are here to provide some updates on our fourth year of the five-year district strategic plan, and also going to share some of our approach for reaching those goals in our fifth and final year of the strategic plan. So with me this morning, I have Ms. Vining, our Director of Assessment and Calendar and Research, Mr. Rembert, our Area Superintendent of Region One, Ms. Kiner, Area Superintendent of Region Three, and Ms. Connor, our Executive Director of K-12 Academics, will join me in providing these updates. So as you know, four years ago, we launched the Achieve 2026 Five-Year District Strategic Plan, which revolved with five key goal areas, and all of those really centered around our first goal, which is student success and the outcomes of our students and academic performance and graduation rates, which is the heart of what we do here in Marion County Public Schools. So we're going to provide some updates on where we are at the end of that fourth year and how we're moving forward. So as a reminder, the key focus areas for Goal One that we've worked on for the last four years include high-quality Tier One instruction, especially with a literacy focus in all grades, data-driven decision-making, especially looking at our early warning system data and how we can leverage that data to provide better supports for our students, rigorous differentiated learning for all students, targeted supports for our different subgroups that we are absolutely paying attention to because we want success for all students, our expanded early childhood opportunities, and our post-secondary preparation. So on this chart, you'll see how our data is tracked for the last four years. On the far left there, that is our baseline data that we recorded for each of these outcome metrics for Goal One. Most of these outcome metrics are the components of our district grade for each academic year. I will note that when you see asterisks on there, we did add some outcome metrics as we progressed, as we knew this was going to be a fluid document, and we needed to be able to adjust to the change each year. We also made a shift two years ago from FSA, the Florida Standards Assessment, to the FAST, the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking. So changing both the benchmarks that we were teaching students and the way that we were assessing them during this time of the four years of data tracking. The blue shaded area there, that is our target for the end of this coming school year, 25-26 school year, at the end of our five-year district strategic plan. And then you can see how the data is tracked each year with this past year, the 24-25 school year outcomes there on the far right-hand side. I'll note that we made improvement in 10 of the 14 outcome metrics that you see, especially solid gains in ELA, and we're going to go through and highlight some of those achievements, each of those areas and by grade level. We also saw improvement in our newest categories that we added, which are our two subgroup datas that we were paying attention to, which is the percent of our English language learners that are scoring on grade level in English Language Arts and our students with disabilities. You'll see both of those featured at the bottom, and we did show improvement in both of those areas for this past year. We do know that we have a little bit of ways to go to reach our target for this year, but we are absolutely committed to those targets and to moving our district in the necessary direction to get and reach each of those targets by the end of the 25-26 school year. Those targets were set several years ago as a way for us to not only gauge our improvement, but also to know that if we reach these targets, we would be an A school district. And that is certainly our goal for this year.
Mr. Whitehouse, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you think is our biggest challenge working with those subgroups? Is it, you know, is it attendance? Is it, maybe you don't have an answer. I don't really mean to put you on the spot, I was just thinking as you were talking. And so if that's what's keeping us from being an A, and that's where we're struggling to have the most growth, do we, have we identified what that hurdle is?
Yes, so the, if you're referencing the two bottom targets are the subgroups. So that is not a standalone component of our district grade. They are factored within our achievement. We wanted to call those out because one of the pieces that our schools themselves are measured on are federal index points, which we're going to share a little bit more about later, but the Federal Percentage Point Index is a part of the federal Every Student Succeed Act, and our requirement is to track and monitor the success of each of those subgroups. And so essentially, what happens is the state will calculate a school grade for each subgroup. So they'll look at a specific subgroup like English language learners or students with disabilities, and they'll calculate a school grade for them. And the goal is for every subgroup at every school to be above 41%, which, if you remember, 41% is the minimum threshold for a C grade for a school. And so we had a number of schools this past year that were at year five of a subgroup being below 41%, and the threshold was six years of data. So if a school reached six years of subgroup data below, they would change their status with the state monitoring system from being just a targeted support to a comprehensive support. And so we knew we needed to focus more on these subgroups, not because it was a standalone category, but we know that all the success of all of our students is critical, and they do factor into the overall components of our school and district grades for ELA, math, science, social studies, et cetera. So the, I mean, obviously, the challenge that we face with both of these subgroups of students is they come in at disadvantages. Students who are trying to learn a new language, trying to learn the English language for the first time when they enter, obviously have a lot more to catch up with the rest of our peers. And being able to provide the right supports in the classroom to make sure that our teachers are differentiating the instruction to meet those learners' needs is a challenge, especially when you have a lot of new teachers or teachers that are changing careers, helping them to build those skills to not only just teach the content itself appropriately, but to them be able to provide the right supports for the students in the classroom who may be either learning the language for the first time or have specific needs based on their IEP if they're a student with a disability. So there's certainly a lot of challenges with that. But, you know, I feel like what we're seeing here is we are, by focusing in on the challenge, we are making progress. We have additional strategies that we're working on to support those teachers in both of those areas this year that I think are going to help building us in the right direction. But we know that those are always going to be targets for us that we've got to continue to focus on, is, again, the success of every student is critical for us.
Thank you for that. I just, we're going to have to really double down because this group, you know, we've increased our ratios due to, you know, budget cuts, and we also were losing some resources that are imperative for these particularly two groups. And so we made some gains because we lowered the rate, well, not just because, but one of the things, we lowered ratios, we had supporting programs, and so we just want to be sure to really track our progress and support our staff.
Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Throer was waiting.
Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't see your finger. Go ahead.
Well, and I just wanted to offer a, maybe a unique shifting perspective on this, is prior to this year, when we increased ratios, we had 150-plus students sitting in front of unqualified substitutes. And so while two more students in a classroom is not ideal, it's going to be very interesting for me personally to see the data with essentially every student being, because we have essentially neutralized our vacancies, and we've now put every student in front of a certified educator. And contrary to the narratives on social media, they are all in fact certified and have bachelor's degrees. But it will be interesting to look at the data and compare it because I believe, as an educator myself, that students in front of certified educators, regardless of the amount of students, have a higher likelihood of performing than they do in front of someone who has no skill set other than they are willing to show up every day and are grateful for them supporting us as a substitute. And so it will be interesting to reflect on the data. I do think, in my opinion, it's going to be positive. That's just my little projection.
Thank you for that insight, Dr. James. Yes, Ms. Throer.
Thank you, Chair, and my mind went exactly to the same place as yours did. I am looking at our lowest quartile students for both math and English Language Arts and seeing, you know, pretty flat growth there. And so in my mind, I ask myself the same question, the kids that are in the lowest quartile, what is happening with them? What are some of the major reasons why we're just not moving that very well at the moment? And of course, me being me, my mind goes to attendance and motivation. And so I would like to get more information in the near future about correlations, you know, to these categories, and what can we do as a board to support our schools in this initiative, you know, to continue to make progress. make progress. Also thinking about substitutes, we have a program now and have had for a year or two to make sure that the substitutes that we're getting have some qualifications. I guess I just want to be careful about saying unqualified anybody again because of what circulates around in the community. So could we get maybe a little bit more definition on that, the skillset of the substitutes that we're currently using?
Yes, ma'am. We can provide that.
Okay. Because that is really important, and I don't disagree at all. You know, we were fortunate enough to have kids that, you know, were pretty high performers, you know, and they were in advanced classes, and some of those classes were really large. But the kids were motivated, there was strong parent support, great teachers, so, you know, they did fine. And we all want to minimize. It's awful for a teacher that is learning as they go, which we all are to a certain extent, but to come into a classroom just not feeling prepared. And obviously, we want to minimize that. And my heart and thanks goes out to all educators, regardless of their skillset coming in, that they're at least willing, as Board Member James was saying, to come through the door. And then what we do with that and how we help, you know, support and mold and shape is critical. So those are the things that are floating through my mind. Always when you dig a little deeper into the data, which we all love to do, and, you know, what are the major factors that we can help improve and minimize if they're negative ones, so we can start getting the same amount of movement that we're seeing in some of these other categories, it's just great. So those are my few cents.
Yes, Dr. Brewer.
Mr. Whitehouse and the group will explain more, but something we do provide our first-year teachers with are the incredibly enhanced curriculum resources, and that's making a big difference for our first-year teachers that are walking in. And those teachers have, even if they have a temporary certification, as they're working through their professional certification, those teachers are given the same resources and even more. And they are day-by-day lesson plans, and they will explain more. But we will provide more information about the training that is provided to the ESS group, if I heard you correct, Ms. Rohr. Okay, we can provide that information to you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. We'll let you continue.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So we wanted to be able to share some grade-level breakdown of our test score performance for ELA, math, science, and social studies for this past year. I highlighted this before with you, but I think this is really important to continue to note. With our focus on literacy the last few years, we continue to see growth in every single grade level in our English Language Arts test scores last year. So you'll note, every grade level improved on the prior year. Also, as you track the cohort of students, that same group of students moving from one grade level to the next, we saw improvement in every single cohort moving from year to year. And this is the second year in a row that we've seen that trend with our new FAST assessment. So certainly, that emphasis on literacy has made some positive shifts for our schools and for our students. Next is our math data, and as you noted, we certainly saw some struggles with our math this past year. While our math scores overall for percent of students scoring at level three or above improved by one percentage point, we definitely had some grade levels that we need to focus in on a little bit more with this coming school year. You'll see our fifth and sixth grade scores and our eighth grade scores were in the negative for this past school year. And so we know that working with our elementary and middle schools on our math instruction, and not just core instruction, but also how we're supporting our struggling math students, is going to be critical for us to be able to move this and reach our target for this school year. Next is our science results. So we did see positive growth in eighth grade and in biology. I know this before, but biology did outpace the growth of the state with a six percentage point gain compared to the state's five points, so we did close that gap a little bit more. This is the fourth year in a row that we've seen gains out of our biology students, so a very positive result, and kudos to all of our biology teachers in our high schools that are really trying to work hard to continue to improve their craft and improve the results for our students. We know fifth and eighth grade science, these are two areas that we certainly have focused on for years and will continue to. The big challenge with fifth and eighth grade science is that these tests cover multiple years of content, whereas biology is just testing what they learn in biology that year. Fifth grade covers third grade and fourth grade benchmarks along with the fifth grade benchmarks. Eighth grade covers sixth grade and seventh grade benchmarks along with the eighth grade. So it's a lot for those teachers to be able to manage, but we're going to continue to focus on those. With fifth grade, we are actually anticipating the release of a full fifth-grade science assessment from the state this summer, so we'll actually get to see what the new full assessment looks like from start to finish. We did get the release of eighth grade last year and certainly gleaned some good information from that. I will share one of the other things we did at the very beginning of the summer is we identified fifth-grade science teachers at schools that are not typically high-performing schools that exceeded expectations, meaning they had incredible results that surpassed their school's results in fifth-grade science. And we brought those teachers together to ask what they thought worked. What were the things that really showed improvement for their students that allowed them to exceed expectations in fifth-grade science? And it was great to hear some of their feedback, and we gained a lot, saw a lot of commonalities between what they were doing with their students to gain that success, and we're working to embed a lot of those practices into what we do to support our schools in fifth-grade science this year. So we know we've got work to do, but we have some plans in place to be able to support our teachers moving into this year. Social studies, we saw growth in both of our tested areas. So civics made huge gains this year with a 10-point gain, again, outpacing the state growth of four points, so we closed that gap significantly with the state performance with our civics. So definitely kudos to all of our civics teachers across all of our middle schools. And our U.S. history scores also improved. This was the fourth year in a row as well for U.S. history that we saw gains. So definitely positive results from our social studies, and social studies tends to be and still is one of our highest-performing subject areas that we have, very close to in line with where the state is performing in both those areas. So this chart shows tracking our middle school acceleration. So we began looking at middle school acceleration as a part of school and district grades back in 2015. And so you can see the positive trend that we've had as we've focused in on providing more opportunities for our students. So middle school acceleration comes from the results of our students in seventh grade who score level three or above in math on the state assessment. So if they score at that level in any math in seventh grade, in eighth grade, our goal is to accelerate them, either through providing high school classes, either algebra or geometry courses, or providing high school-level industry certifications for them. The industry certifications are lagging data, so we get that from the students' results from the prior school year. However, the bulk of our results come from the EOC scores, our students who are taking algebra, geometry in eighth grade, and those are the current year results. So very strong gains from our students in those middle school accelerated programs. We actually saw our highest number of industry certifications this past year that we've seen yet since we've been tracking industry certifications, with over 2,100 industry certifications earned, which is huge. Again, that's lagging data, but we know that that's going to pay us dividends next year as we incorporate those scores into our school and district grades. High school acceleration, we are definitely seeing much stronger results than we did 10 years ago when we first started tracking high school acceleration. We do have that blip there in 2021, which was the COVID year when all of the testing was shut down, and certainly the results are not quite as accurate as what we would expect to see. So if you take out that one year, we've seen a very positive trend. We did dip slightly from 2024, but we also saw more graduates that year, and that tends to happen when we do have more graduates. If we don't have all of those graduates with an acceleration score, meaning that they pass a college-level exam, which is challenging, or earn an industry certification, we often do see a slight dip in our performance. So that is something that we are focused in, again, and working with our students on. I shared the AP results with you all before, so we do have really strong results from this past school year with AP. This is, again, lagging data that will impact our school and district grades next year. But we had more students than ever taking advanced placement courses last year. We had more courses and exams taken than ever before, and we had 69% of all exams taken were passed by our students, as a 7% increase and a huge result for our students. And so we're really excited that we continue to expand opportunities for students, getting more students enrolled, but we're not lowering that bar. We're increasing the level of expectation and increasing the outcome and the performance of our students in each of those courses.
Chair, just had a quick question on this, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have ACE general paper at every high school site now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so at some point in a four-year program, every student is participating in ACE general paper, which is considered a high school acceleration point.
Yes.
So we understand that there are some children either not showing up for the exam, not passing the exam, or whatever, and so they're not getting that acceleration point. What are we doing besides that as a catch-all to ensure... Because I'm of the opinion, being a dual enrollment student myself, which understanding dual enrollment looks different now for Marion County, but like EMC 1101 and EMC 1102 are, in my opinion, a lot easier than an ACE or AP or IB acceleration English course, not necessarily ACE general paper, but in general when we're looking at that coursework. So what is the catch-all we're creating beyond ACE general paper to ensure that we're catching the students who fail to show up to tests? Because what is the show-up rate for... Do we know that? Or we could look it up, right? How many of those seniors are not showing up for the exam, or how many of them in that cohort of seniors who we've put all the eggs in the acceleration basket in this one moment are just showing up because they have to show up for whatever reason but are not really attempting? Because I would love to address acceleration prior to senior year. I think waiting until May of their senior year to bank on an acceleration point is way too risky for my risk of herself personally.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. So I'll answer several questions. I'll answer each of those. So the first one, you're absolutely right. Dual enrollment can provide a much easier route for some of our students. The big challenge we have now is that we can't offer dual enrollment at any of our high schools. We've lost that ability, whereas in the past, we were offering courses at almost all of our high schools, even if it was just one dual enrollment class on campus that students could take, so that transportation was not an issue. So right now with our students, the only option is you either transport yourself to CF, which we know with our poverty rate, a lot of our students do not have transportation, or B, they take an online course, which is certainly not the avenue for all of our students to be successful. A lot of our students need that in-person instruction and a teacher side-by-side to be able to help support them. So we do certainly encourage students who are eligible and able to do dual enrollment, that that is a good option for them. We'd love to be able to get back to that place where we can offer some courses on our campus. The easiest one that we were working with a few years ago was the Student Success Class, the SLS class, which is really the freshman welcome-to-college course that all students are required to take when they enter CF. And that was a great option for us because the material allowed the students to get comfortable and understanding what college-level work was like, but it was also extending that bridge for them to be able to take that next step and then say, okay, I can be successful, and I can move on to this college level and be able to take some more courses next year after I graduate. So we'd love to be able to get back to that. So that's the first question. The second part of that is some of our schools have actually started moving the ACE general paper to junior year for that very reason, that they don't want it to be, let's wait until the senior year and find out. So we know at the end, for those schools, we'll know at the end of their junior year, how many of our students still have not passed or met that acceleration component. So then we have an opportunity, their senior year, to find another course that we can put them into for another option. Certainly, expanding our industry certification is a huge one as well, because a lot of our students that we would love to get them to pass college-level work, that's just not their future, right? That's not the route that they're going down. And so being able to offer more opportunities for industry certifications at all of our high schools is the best route to catch a lot of those students that know they want to go right out into the workforce when they leave our school system.
Thank you. I just think with some creative problem-solving and solutions, this number could be in the 80s very easily. We just have to find the right programs and platforms for each student, but all of these students, I believe, can be earning acceleration points. We just have to figure out how to create the programming to make it happen.
Yes, ma'am. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, just as part of that, I'm thinking about, you know, we've talked about college prep and industry certifications, and I'm thinking about, are there any opportunities within the military track for acceleration?
So yes, there is. There's one route, and they can earn a score, I think it's a 64 on the ASVAB for the composite score, but they also have to participate in two years of the same JRTC unit, so Air Force two years or Army two years. They can't bounce between them and earn the ASVAB score in order to get that. We get maybe one student a year that gets that. A 64 on the ASVAB is hard. That's a high score, and typically, our students who are able to score that high on the ASVAB, they've already passed, you know, an AP exam or a Cambridge exam, so they've already met that requirement somewhere else. But we catch a few, but that is the one track that's available for our students that are a little bit more enlistment-focused after us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. And so then the last chart we have here shows our graduation tracking for the last 10 years, and this has been kind of an up-and-down journey for us with graduation rates. This, again, is lagging data, so what we're showing there for this past year that was featured in our 2025 district grade is actually the class of 2024's graduation rate of 80%, which was an improvement from the prior year. We don't have the official result for this past class of 2025 graduation rate, but from what we've seen, we're confident this number is going to be much higher. We saw very strong results from some of our schools, especially Lakeview High School, and Mr. McAtier has really made some positive gains in graduation rate at that school, and so we're excited to see in the fall, when we get past Survey Five reporting and we can finalize these graduation rates, where we're going to end up. And we're actually still graduating kids this week because graduation for the class of 2025 runs all the way through summer school. We just got an email this morning from Ms. Cruz of another student that they got to finish up all the requirements and graduate, so we're super excited. Our schools are continuing to push and make sure that we get as many students across that threshold as possible. I will go ahead and highlight one piece here that, just for your awareness, since we're talking about graduation, was a change in statute language for this year that we want to make sure we're communicating out to families, but the certificate of completion is no longer an option for students from statute language. And in the past, students who met all the requirements for graduation except for passing one or both of the state exams could earn a certificate of completion, which we would then allow those students to participate in the commencement ceremony for each of our schools at the end of the year. That is no longer an option for our students as of July 1. So again, we're going to have to work extra hard to make sure that we can get all of our students to finish all the requirements so that they can actually walk across the stage and participate with their peers at the end of the school year.
Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. I know that's been something that's been talked about for several years, and frankly, I for one am grateful, and other school board members around the state have been pushing really hard to get that because there've been lots of community conversations all around the state about, okay, but they don't have a high school diploma. A certificate of completion actually doesn't get them anything. It's nothing. It's just saying, you went to school. I mean, really, and you passed your classes. So not meeting graduation requirements is something that we're going to have to really push forward on. So, Mr. Whitehouse, I would just ask if the board agrees, whenever we do have our final graduation rate in the fall, if you also can aggregate out the numbers of course completers out of that number. So we would know actually where we would have if we were using the new statute on this year's results. So that way, that gives us that real number, so we can really see what that looks like.
So I can certainly provide you the percent of students that were certificate of completion. However, those students do not factor in.
Okay, great.
Our graduation rate. The only students that factor in the graduation rate are the ones that meet the federal requirements of all the credits, the 2.0 GPA, and passing both the state ELA and math requirements for graduation.
Okay, perfect. But I do think it will be helpful even school by school, or however that best looks, because we always go to graduations and we're like, and how many do they have walking today? And so that number can vary certainly significantly if we have a lot of folks that have been course completers as opposed to actually graduating from school. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anyone else? Okay, yes.
Just stepping back to targets, and I think you said earlier at the beginning of this presentation that the reason why the targets percentages are things like, you know, 60%, you know, 50%, 75%, depending on the category, that's because that's what would earn an A rating, the correlation. Okay. I think that's something really important for the community to understand, and I am really looking forward to the day when it is based on 100% scale, you know, across the board for school grades. It is unfathomable to me to think that you can be a 46 and be a B in anything, to be honest with you. But that's a larger conversation, but it's really important to get that out there to the community. the community. Why our strategic plan looks like our targets? Well, why are we going for an F is what it looks like to a typical layman person. That has got to be better explained. It's really, really important because it makes it look like, you know, our expectations are less than lukewarm, and that couldn't be further from the truth.
Yes ma'am, I agree, and I think that is an important clarification, but I do also want to add, I know Dr. Brewer has shared this, I've shared this, we've shared this with all of our administrators at our Leadership Summit this week, we're not satisfied until we get to 100% of our students reading on grade level and 100% of our students performing math on grade level. So, yes, we know we have to make reasonable gains each year, and we've got to set obtainable goals for our schools, but we are not going to rest until we get to 100%.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're with you on that, I think I can safely say. But it's what the community sees and what they interpret. Obviously, our goal is to, our goal is to be an A district based on state measurements, and then further, because that's what's best for kids. So, if there's a way to distill that and get that out there, it would really be helpful, I think, in getting more and more of the community, which we already have a bunch, getting behind us and pushing because they understand what those numbers mean and don't mean.
Yes ma'am.
Thanks.
Good point. Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
All right, I will turn it over to Ms. Vining.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
Good morning.
As you recall, oops, here to change for me. As you recall, the state adjusted the school grade ranges last year, raising the bar for secondary and combination schools, considering that combination school ranges also include the district grade. When the new ranges were adopted, the escalator clause was put in place to continue to raise the bar for school and district grades. This clause states that once school and district grades are released, if 75% or more of any school type falls into the A or B ranges, the ranges for the following year will be adjusted. The adjustment must reset the minimum required percentage of points for each grade of A, B, C, or D at the next highest percentage, ending in the numeral five or zero, whichever is closest to the current percentage. For the 24-25 school year, 82% of high schools across the state earned an A or a B, and 77% of combination schools, which includes districts, earned an A or a B. Given this, the school grade scale will be adjusted for the 25-26 school year. When comparing the adjusted scale score ranges, the largest adjustment is the minimum percentage of points for a B letter grade, which increases from 57% to 60. And you can see on this slide, when you're looking at the middle school ranges and you compare to that high in combination ranges, that's the shift, so you can see where each of those adjustments were made. We are so excited that we are a B district grade this year. The district grade increased the percent of points earned in almost every component, with ELA achievement being the highest it has been in 10 years. Our largest increase, as Mr. Whitehouse had mentioned, was seven percentage points in the social studies component, which includes civics and US history. Middle school acceleration was another jump for our district, increasing five percentage points. As Mr. Whitehouse shared, the graduation rate also increased to 80%. These increases are a testament to the hard work and dedication from our leaders and staff across the schools and district level. Although we saw gains in most areas, math learning gains and high school acceleration showed a slight decrease. Dr. N.H. Jones, 8th Street, Ward Highlands, and Madison Street Academy each maintained an A school grade this year. Additionally, Bellevue Middle, Osceola Middle, O'Callie Charter Middle, and Ina A. Colen were our secondary or combination schools that earned an A. 46% of our C schools increased their overall total points earned. 10 schools increased the overall school letter grade this year. O'Callie Charter Middle and McIntosh Area School increased two letter grades, moving from a C to an A for O'Callie Charter, and an F to a C for McIntosh. Although the district saw many increases, we have five schools that earned a D letter grade. Our team will work closely with the Bureau of School Improvement and our curriculum team to provide support for each of our D schools. You will hear more in a few minutes about the plan for specific support this school year. You started to ask a few questions about this, but I'll go ahead and go through it again, it'll just reiterate some of the things that Mr. Whitehouse explained about the federal percent of points. So, in addition to school grades, the state calculates the Federal Percent of Points Index, or FPPI, rating for each subgroup and overall by school. This is calculated using the school grade components with the addition of English Language Proficiency, or ELP, progress. The Bureau of School Improvement provides support to schools based on the number of years each subgroup has been below 41%. The levels of support are tiered, with Comprehensive Support and Improvement, or CSNI, being the highest level of support. This year, we are excited to have 12 schools that did not have any subgroups fall below the 41%. Bellevue Middle, Dr. N.H. Jones, Madison Street Academy, Maplewood, Marion Oaks, McIntosh, Ocala Springs, O'Callie Charter Middle, Osceola Middle, Pace, Saddlewood, and Ward Highlands didn't have any subgroups fall below that 41%, so that's exciting and something to celebrate. Out of the 30 schools falling into CSNI status, nine of those schools had an overall FPPI calculation below 41%. Those schools were Pheasant, Hillcrest, Legacy, Marion County Acceleration Academy, Marion Technical Institute, Oak Crest, Marion Success Academy, and Wymina Park. These nine schools will also receive additional targeted support from the Bureau of School Improvement and the District Curriculum Team.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Conrad and Board members. As part of our commitment to Goal One and achieve 2026 student success, we are providing differentiated instruction support to our schools based on their current performance and needs. The supports you'll see on the next few slides are designed to ensure that every school receives the right level of guidance and accountability to help students succeed. The supports include those benchmark-aligned lessons that we were talking about earlier, provided to our elementary teachers and targeted secondary subjects. The intensity of support increases from Tier One through Tier Three. Tier One schools are our high-performing campuses. These schools demonstrate strong outcomes in student achievement and overall performance. The focus here is on maintaining the successes while continuing to refine instructional practice. Supports include monthly classroom walkthroughs, collaborative planning aligned to Tier One instruction, and data-driven strategies. The action planning also will take place where schools will monitor students with chronic absenteeism by using our early warning systems and additional attendance programs. We will also conduct an annual instructional review in each of these schools and monthly data meetings with the area superintendent to monitor trends in academic progress, attendance, and behavior.
Good morning. Tier Two schools are performing at an adequate level but require more targeted supports to further accelerate progress. In these schools, we shift to at least bimonthly walkthroughs and more frequent planning and coaching sessions. Instructional reviews will occur each semester, and bimonthly data meetings will provide space for continuous dialogue centered around key indicators and specifically for SS subgroups that we mentioned previously. The goal is to build consistency in effective Tier One instruction and to ensure that instructional strategies are reaching all learners. These supports are designed to promote instructional equity, strengthen leadership capacity, and ensure that every student is making meaningful academic gains.
Our Tier Three schools face the greatest challenges, which can include those in turnaround or close to that status. These campuses do receive the most intensive level of support. We work closely, side-by-side, with our school-based administrators in these schools to work through classroom walkthroughs with them. We provide frequent collaborative planning to their teachers. We focus on rigorous, data-driven action planning for individual students and subgroups. Instructional reviews do happen three times per year in our Tier Three schools, and we have weekly data meetings with the leadership team at each of these schools to ensure that us as principal supervisors and our school leaders do stay closely aligned on student progress, barriers they may be having, and any needed support for those individual schools and teams for their students in order to improve student outcomes. The priority here is urgent in order to have sustained improvement in instruction and outcomes. These tiered supports represent how we will align our leadership efforts to meet each school's needs and drive progress towards our Achieved 2026 goals. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Brewer, interim superintendent, for any additional comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kinerd.
Thank you. I just appreciate all the work they have done. As you know, we just had our Leadership Summit and the Principal Institute, and the work that went into that to ensure that all of these areas were explained and shared with the principals was really impressive. So, we received a lot of feedback, and we're ready to go to continue Goal One, but I open it up to you all for any questions or comments.
I can start?
Sure.
Thank you all for putting this together. I think it is helpful to paint the picture of where we are and where we need to go. I think it speaks to the work we've done to accelerate our schools that were on the cusp of improvement, that were a B district while we still have more D schools this year. We really saw, I would say, necessary positive pressure applied to some of our schools that needed to make gains, that had been kind of just stagnant, and so we saw that positive improvement in some of those schools where they really needed to demonstrate that acceleration. The students and the staff were all acceptable, and sometimes we just have to get a little bit more creative about how we go about managing school grade and what courses we offer so that we can ensure that students are placed in the right place. Because while a lot of people don't like to say it out loud, leave it to me, I will, school grade is one big master manipulation of statistics, and so how do we create an environment where we're ensuring that we're doing what's best for kids, but also ensuring that we're meeting the expectation of the Department of Education? Because that's what holds us accountable. So, I draw pause and caution to increasing our level of D schools. I've had private conversations with many of you about my personal perspective on some of these schools, and I think that it's going to be important that we are diligent from a leadership perspective of addressing barriers, needs, or inconsistencies immediately, and addressing them, and making the appropriate changes or shifts that need to occur, which sometimes feel audacious or uncomfortable, but our students deserve to have the best possible scenario, and so the adults may need to be uncomfortable to make sure that we're doing what's best for students. And I think everyone in this room agrees with that based on our private conversations, and so I'll leave it at that. I think we're doing really good work. I think the data shows overall that we're moving in the right direction. We've consistently been moving in the right direction, and we just need to continue to apply the appropriate amount of pressure and make sure that everyone in our organization, including our parents of our students, understand what our expectation is for student performance and how we are going to hold each other mutually accountable for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. And following those comments, I am grateful that you said it first, the master manipulation that is district and school grade. And also speaking to what Board Member Thrower said just a moment ago, I'm certain that Representative Susan Valdez will put out the legislation again this year that school grade calculations and district grade calculations will be adjusted on a 100-point scale, and a 90 to 100 is an A. I'm certain we're going to get there. There will be a five-to-10-year grace period. DOE will have a lot of work to figure out how to make that work. Because while our strategic plan, when those of us who were here helped to develop it for the 2026 plan, and many of you in the room were also a part of that planning to create the strategic plan that we currently have, the conversation wasn't just to become an A district, it was to move out of the bottom third. And I am very, very grateful that we are a B district, but we are absolutely still smack dab in the middle of the bottom third. So, being a B district in the state of Florida right now also means there's only 10 districts that are either tied with us or worse than us. And out of 67, that still puts us down in the lower tier. However, that doesn't speak to the immense amounts of work that all of the team has put in, and whether it's in a formula manipulation or actually helping our students succeed, because getting acceleration and having them exposed to things they hadn't ever been exposed to, while it gives us great percentage points towards our goals, it also actually is exposing kids to things that are going to help them succeed later in life. So, somewhat, the manipulation actually works to everybody's favor. So, I'm just grateful for everything that everybody has put forth here. I'm looking forward to the upcoming strategic planning that we're going to have to do to see where we can go. We now have baselines. We didn't have those numbers before. So, when I think of where we were when we created 2026, it's, there's a lot of things that we didn't even have in place yet, and so we have all that now to see what we want to measure, how we want to measure differently, all of that. And just to the team here today, though, some of the faces and titles have changed over the course of the last couple of months and weeks, grateful for the hard work that you've just jumped right in, even if it was something you had not been doing previously, or something you had been doing previously, but now you're in charge of it. Just grateful for all of the work that you all are putting in to make sure that we're going to continue in the trajectory that is only moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Ms. Thrower, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just quickly, the trajectory that is only moving forward, and that doesn't happen without the tremendous long-term dedication of people that really care. So, I just continue to be so grateful personally and as a school board member and a community member for the great work that continues to happen, the direction that we're moving. And my only ask is, you know, what you're seeing, you know, and the response time that you think is really necessary to make any changes, bring it. You know, if we don't know, we can't support as effectively as we could. So, let's go.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thrower.
I just want to round out. I do have one question I just, I want to ask you all your opinion on, but I want to thank you all and your teams of people. We review this portion once a year, and we know you all are on the ground doing the work every single day. So, I just want to reiterate what my fellow board members have said, is that we truly appreciate the work that you are doing each and every day with our students and our families. With that, I had one quick question. Looking at our data, I'm kind of going back to the beginning. I think this is Slide Four. Hold on, might be Slide Three, one second. Just about the data-driven decisions, it is Slide Three, and early learning with literacy focus. In years past, we've not had, and Mr. Whitehouse, you and I have talked about this a little bit a while back, we haven't retained students when they're not ready to move forward. And then we look, at least from my perspective, we look at our students that are going into that third grade, then reading camp, that are not ready to be promoted, and in my opinion, we don't get terrific results. You know, we're not going to make up years' worth of loss of reading gains in a couple of half-days, you know, during the summer. And so, is there, are we headed in a direction where we better prepare students and families for a more successful journey, educational journey, by delaying maybe their forward movement in education?
Yes, so the answer, the short answer to that question is yes. So, with our Leadership Summit, we shared with our teams that we really have three core focuses this year. One of those is high-quality instruction for all of our students. One of those is high-quality instruction for all of our students. And that's going to be ongoing work that we have certainly taken on every year. But we've really tried to zero in on the high-yield strategies that are going to have the greatest impact for our students and making the formula for success as simple as possible for early-career teachers, all the way to veteran teachers, to be able to know what it takes to have a really high-quality lesson in front of students. The second thing is focusing on attendance for all of our schools and all of our students. So, we have asked all of our schools that fall below our Goal Two attendance target, which we'll get to next month when we do our Goal Two reporting, to have an attendance team in place. And we actually had a few schools that have great attendance team strategies share with the principals and school teams what their strategies are. And we've rolled out some additional supports for those schools to be able to start working on how do we address these attendance challenges on a daily basis. To Ms. Thorer's point, we know that our students aren't learning if they're not here. And so, that's going to be a huge expectation for us. And we'll talk more about that next month with Goal Two. And the third part of that is really focusing in on leveraging early warning system data. And so, our expectation is that we're having weekly conversations about students and that we're leveraging key data points to make informed decisions about what we need to do to help our students be successful. Part of that is looking at things like attendance, academics, behavior, making intervention decisions for students based on those needs. The other part of that is really understanding what it takes to be a graduate in Marion County. And I think we shared with you all a few months ago, kind of our sketch idea, but we've really refined that approach to what it means to have every child be a graduate. And every child being a graduate starts in kindergarten for us when they walk in the door. And so, we've laid out milestones for our schools and for our parents to be able to understand what are those checkpoints along the way throughout my 13-year career in Marion County Public Schools that I need to be able to reach to make sure that I do graduate on time. And the first one on that list is being kindergarten-ready. And so, we know that if our students are not hitting that kindergarten readiness score on PM two, their first year with us, that we need to start having decisions about what is in the best interest of that student. And that could possibly be a retention in kindergarten for that student to make sure that we're closing in those gaps early before we get to the point where the gap gets so big that it becomes even more challenging to be able to fill. So, that's the long answer to your question of, yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate that, Mr. Whitehouse, because as a previous primary teacher for a very long time, the narrative is that that retention's a negative thing. And we use the word student success a lot. So, it kind of, you know, it becomes just what we use all the time, and it loses some of its meaning. But really, if you're looking at those students coming in the door and they're not ready for those pre-reading or literacy skills, it really, to me, it's the gift of time. You know, allowing those students that extra bit of time to get those literacy skills solid, you know, that they know them and so that the rest of their school career is successful. And so, I think the narrative on that is so important also. This really is a gift. We want your student to be successful. And in my experience, many times, it's not the fix, the end-all-be-all, you know, for every situation, but for many situations, it is that kids just need a little more time, which I would guess is more true today than it was when I was in that grade because developmentally, we're really pushing the envelope. But we're asking littles at five and six to do each and every day. So, thank you for your insights on that. I look forward in a positive student success way of that conversation moving forward. Yes?
You reminded me of something too, if you don't mind. So, there's a piece, a critical component that I have been bringing up since I was a board member, is our absence of a K-2 varying exceptionalities program. We have students who do not qualify for an inclusion VPK unit, which means that their disability is significant enough, just obviously, you all in the room know, but for the general population, means that their disability is significant enough that they only qualify for a three-day-a-week program with Marion County Public Schools in a self-contained setting, which means they're not with general population peers. And then, at the end of that year, which is their VPK year, their year before kindergarten, we sit down and we say, congratulations, you've earned inclusion kindergarten. And the parents feel so elated because their child is going to an inclusion kindergarten class after being in a self-contained setting for two years. And their child, more often than not, is unsuccessful because they have not had an appropriate environment to bridge into an inclusion setting. And I believe, wholeheartedly, we are failing these students and not setting them up for third-grade success by not having a bridge into inclusion. We talk about bridging into and out of restrictive environments. And this, there is no bridge for these little sweet babies who've been in a very self-contained setting. They go from maybe 10 children and two to three adults to 20 children and two adults. And so, it is very, one of my top priorities that I have just continued to say is we need to bring back K-2 VE units so that some of these students can be in a more restrictive environment, but be able to integrate into an inclusion environment so that they can be set up for success while being that where they are. Because these students are our subgroups. They are our subgroups as we go into school grade, and we are not setting them up for success. And so, I really would love to see us figure out how to address that because they are missing the mark, and it's not their fault. They're not being given the tools to be successful. And the parents are, in my opinion, dishonestly being propped up to believe that their child is prepared for an inclusion setting when the data would reflect that that is not. I have one of those children at one of my preschools right now, and her grandparents are ecstatic because she's going to General Ed kindergarten in August, and she's still not potty-trained. She's still not potty-trained. And I cannot wait to see what happens when she shows up in that kindergarten classroom and she is developmentally not ready to be in that setting, but we have just decided that that's what's best. And so, I want to see a true focus on fixing this because if we address what we're doing in K-2 and if we meet kids where they are, they will be most prepared for third grade. And I think it would be a real way to address it. I think kindergarten retentions are necessary when they're necessary, and we need to start addressing it. I always tell parents, though, don't hold your kid back from VPK. Don't give them two years of VPK. Please let us just catch them in the school system. And we haven't been doing that. But I think if we bring that back, kids starting kindergarten timely and then being caught in K through two, if necessary, to make sure that they get that extra attention, because an extra year in VPK with potentially a non-certified K-five teacher is not necessarily what's best for them. But I really think we can address this as long as we put in the right systems.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like I need to give two claps.
Yes, Lamar.
Yeah, the leadership's...
Leadership, yes.
Fully agree.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Board Member Thorer.
What Board Member James just stated is huge. Transition support. What ends up happening more often than not is that people just tend to become typecast, whether they're children or adults. And, well, they are this, so that. They are this, so that. The most beautiful thing to witness is a student that is getting the opportunity to transition into less restrictive environments based on their true strengths and abilities, you know, and then gradually ease into a less restrictive environment. So many times, we see kids that are supposedly in their less restrictive environment, but they're really just parked in the back of the room, you know, doing nothing because there just isn't the support that's needed for that or the mindset, you know, to be honest. Remind me again, when does school attendance, at what age and date, does school attendance become compulsory?
Six.
Age six.
Their sixth birthday.
Their sixth birthday. And I know this board has had deep conversations about this, and it's time to bring it back up because the writing is on the wall. If the kids aren't ready, even age six, is too late, realistically. We love the outliers, you know, the ones that make it, and we celebrate that. But we have to redouble our efforts as a board to get that change at the state level. Because if these kids are behind already and they're missing a bunch of school, and I don't think a lot of parents even realize, to Chair Conrad's very experienced point, how much kindergarten has changed and the requirements. So, some of, a lot of that is communication always. But we need to, again, get some teeth and statute behind us and keep working to get that changed.
Well, and Chair, I'm remembering Ms. Dobbs, who I'm hopeful was one of the presenters at the summit because she is an exceptional leader on attendance. But I'm reflecting back on her data. And the subgroup at her school, when you're looking at grades, that has always been the worst with attendance is kindergarten. I mean, to the tune of like 50% some months are chronically absent. And so, we're looking at the data, and this is the year we're supposed to be teaching them the fundamentals of how to blend and segment and start begin reading skills and math skills. And some of them are, 50% of them in some months are chronically absent. And so, but there's no teeth to, other than posturing with letters that are absolutely necessary but may lack teeth behind them, you know, what can we do? And so, you're 100% correct.
So, we will partner.
We support.
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, and speaking to that, during my board comments today, I was going to bring up, hopefully, August 7th, we can have as our work session where we talk about legislative priorities because we already have potentially a calendar date with our legislator who wants to meet with us, and we need to get those nailed down. So, that, just piggybacking on all of that, we're kind of speaking a bit about legislation. If we want to have a position statement on what this grade change might look like, I mean, that could be potential. But I think it's something that we, as a board, need to get serious about, leading the charge on some of these legislative priorities as we have in years past.
Well, if we're going to work this hard together, we might as well.
Be on the same page.
Right.
Teeth behind it. A lot of times, a carrot is a stick.
Right.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you all spending the morning with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board, with that, I'd like to take a brief recess. Just go to restroom. So, 10:40, we'll come back at 10:50?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Recession at 10:40.
... personnel from secondary curriculum and instruction, fitness and nutrition and schools, ESE, ESOL, and technology departments. The review process of submitted proposals took place from April twenty-third to May second. The district evaluation committees reviewed materials of all submitted proposals to ensure that the publishers selected follow both state and federal statutes. The district evaluation team then convened, discussed findings using the core questions rubric provided by the state, and selected the choices for six-eight health and nine-twelve hope physical education, always keeping in mind our teachers and students that will implement and use the programs in their classrooms. For six-eight health, the district evaluation team selected e-dynamics, middle school health, and Goodheart Wilcox Florida Health Skills for middle school. Policy twenty-five twenty-one is the policy that allows the superintendent to make recommendations. The review committee includes stakeholders from each area that has an impact on student success. Community members are those that were appointed by school board members. We appreciate the impact your committee members had on our teams. Parent members as well as teacher members complete a district application process. For nine-twelve hope physical education, the district evaluation committee selected e-dynamic, physical education variation one A, one B. The timeline for adoption, which as you can see, a lot has passed, but our reviewers have the opportunity to come and see the print resources that were made available for the purpose of review. Along with the print materials, all publishers also provided digital access information for both the student and teacher experience. Reviewers' window opened on May eighteenth through June eighteenth. On June eighteenth, the community and administrative review evening took place. We collected recommendations and comments that were left, and that information was shared with the teacher, parent, and community committees during discussion before final votes were taken. On June twenty-third, the teacher, parent, and community committees met in person at MTI. These committees were broken down by subject area. During this discussion, committee members reviewed data collected from the core questions rubric provided by the state, as well as community and administrator notes and recommendations. When the discussion concluded, each committee member completed their vote. The committee recommendation process begins with the review of materials and feedback by the committee members. Committee members share feedback individually and as a group for the review of the data and feedback collected. During this process, all stakeholders are invited to participate. From the vote, those recommendations are then provided to our interim superintendent, Dr. Brewer. I am excited to share the recommendations of the superintendent. For six-eight health, the recommended program is Goodheart Wilcox Florida Health Skills. For nine-twelve hope physical education, the recommended program is e-dynamics, hope physical education variation one A, one B. The adoption process has many steps and takes several months. The next steps after today, community members will have public access for twenty days of the recommended titles. This information will be posted to the MCPS homepage. On August twelfth, there will be a public hearing for the twenty-five twenty-six instructional materials for adoption. This will be public comment with no vote. On August twenty-sixth, there will be the vote. We will have four votes that evening. Each course has a single-line action item. This will also open the formal thirty-day objection window. And finally, on October fourteenth, with a hearing officer if needed. Otherwise, hearing none after thirty days, ordering will begin. Public access to the recommended titles will be posted to the MCPS homepage this evening. On the MCPS homepage, the public will find the login information as well as login instructions for each of the recommended publishers. Materials are also available for review at the professional library located in Building Twenty. Thank you. This concludes the updates and recommended programs for six-eight health and nine-twelve hope physical education.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hughes. Board, any comments or concerns you want to bring forward? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Brewer.
Just confirming that all of the books that are going to be being recommended are...
And I never shut it off, and that's why. All of the books that are on the superintendent's recommended list are state-approved?
They are on the initial list that the state releases. We are ahead of the timeline, so at this time, the official list has not come out.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? I just wanted to say, one, thank you for your presentation, and, two, I hate that this is coming in in October, right? So, we missed the beginning of the school year. So, the staff will switch that out as it becomes available. What does that look like?
Yes, ma'am. So, they do still have the current materials available that they will utilize. I'm going to work with Charity Corneliusen for the training aspect, so that we can make sure teachers are ready to hit the ground running.
Okay. It's a challenge.
As soon as it is available.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hughes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Code of Student Conduct. Dr. Brewer?
Yes. This is our second, two of two work sessions available for our Code of Student Conduct. Ms. Cynthia Lugo-Hampton will provide the presentation under the leadership of Dr. Curley.
Good morning, Chair Conrad.
Good morning, and I'm excited, it's still morning.
I am too. Good morning, board members, and good morning, interim superintendent, Dr. Brewer. Thank you for this opportunity to present the revisions of the twenty-two-five twenty-six Code of Student Conduct, along with the implementation plan. There's binders that were provided for you, and in the binders, as well as on the agenda, are several documents.
One moment, please. I walked right by them.
Think our names are on them, if you want to make sure you want to take notes here.
This says Danielle Brewer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so in your binders, you have several documents, and they're also available on the agenda as well. There's the redline version of the Code of Student Conduct with both the elementary and secondary Code of Student Conduct, so you can see the revisions, as well as the proposed version, so the nice clean copy of the Code of Student Conduct. In addition, there is the discipline response, level three and four, for both elementary and secondary, and the implementation plan. So, these revisions directly reflect the feedback and the directions provided by this board. Please turn to the secondary Code of Student Conduct to page fifteen. Now, these revisions were made in direct response to the board's request to better highlight the self-defense definition, which was previously difficult to locate. We moved it to the discipline reference guide and placed it alongside the fighting offense. Now, to create a smoother transition, we added a clear statement that fighting is strictly prohibited, along with the definition of what it means to intervene in a fight, creating a more complete section. Now, regarding the dress code, that can be found on page thirty-six, we removed fingertip lengths. That guidelines for shorts and for skirt lengths and kept mid-thigh, so we can avoid any ambiguity.
Love that. I like that, too.
All right, now on page forty-one. In the alternative placement process and appeal section, if you look at line two, it now specifies a clearer timeframe for alternative placement. It states that the length of placement is typically the remainder of the current grading quarter plus the following quarter. This revision provides clearer expectations for staff, students, and families.
Okay. Because before, it was this forty-five day thing.
Yes, ma'am.
But it was never purely forty-five days, really, ever.
No, it wasn't, because of the return to base being at the quarter. So, we just more accurately reflect what it truly is.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now, page forty-nine. Additionally, on forty-nine, while the student use of wireless communication devices policy had already been updated to reflect changes in state law, we added further clarification that devices must be powered off, out of sight, and not in hand during school hours to eliminate any confusion in enforcement. Now, of course, this is specifically for elementary and for middle.
And I have a clarifying question. Well, it's not even a question, I guess. I would venture to guess that the reason Osceola Middle School is an A is in part because of this, maybe, the change of leadership and different structures that Ms. Johnson may have taken, but also the complete elimination of cell phones. And maybe we're reaching for data, because there may not be explicit data to suggest that, but I do think that one could draw that conclusion based on other levels of research. So, Ms. Johnson clearly figured out how to do it, and I haven't had a personal conversation with her. I know some, I think Dr. Campbell has, but I haven't had a personal conversation with her as to how she did it. I actually think it's pretty amazing, because... It is, well, and it's incredibly hard. We are all addicted to our devices as well, so it's incredibly hard to create that disconnect, and she has clearly made it happen. So, is there going to be, is Ms. Johnson holding a training for how to implement cellphone-free schools, specifically in middle school? Because middle school, I think, if we just start targeting middle school, as they roll into high school in the next three years, it will be really easy to implement if the standard has already been set.
I will definitely ask her.
Okay. I just think that if we are finding, I mean, we're talking about, we just talked about Ms. Dobbs in attendance, we find someone who knows how to do it just amazingly well, and then we have them teach others. And so, Ms. Johnson and her team at Osceola Middle have clearly figured out how to conquer this mountain, so how can they go train and change the, maybe, the brain makeup chemistry systems that our schools have of, no, we can't do that, and figure out how to implement?
Those are definitely good ideas, definitely that we can bring to the principal meetings and, you know, AP meetings and invite her.
I definitely think if you miss the August eleventh mark, you've missed the year, and that's just my personal opinion, but I think if you don't start the year with the expectation and the policies and procedures implemented, you might as well wait till next year, because if the standard is the standard, it's the standard all year, and it shouldn't change. So, I would say whatever we're going to do would have to be done before August eleventh, because otherwise, the ship has sailed, and getting it back is really hard.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Speaking to that, and I had spoken to this before, I think the team might have remembered a few weeks ago, or maybe even months now, where I said, if we want to see what this looks like in practice, let's follow the data, because that's what Osceola has done this entire year. And we saw, they are an A, and, you know, there are other things they put in place as well, but the interesting piece of all of that to me is that middle school principals can't not do this. Like, this is now against the law. I mean, this, so, if we don't have this figured out, and they don't do it just like it needs to be done, I mean, I'm not going to name some other law that's some major big violation, but, I mean, this is literally against the law. So, the unfortunate thing to me, in the letter that just went out from the Commissioner of Education, is that he didn't include that kind of language, because he certainly told everything... Because he certainly told everything that parents have the right to do, but he did not say parents do not have the right to text their kids in the middle of school. Which in actuality, if they're elementary through middle school, they don't have the right to do, because that is illegal essentially at this point. I mean, for the student to be able to respond, it would be. So, that's the unfortunate thing about somewhat mixed messages, I guess, that you could get from the state level. But I concur, Osceola had done it this year. It was a vast shock to my eighth grader, because for two years, he didn't have the no-cellphone policy. And then this past year, trust me, the eighth graders did not like it, but they lived with it, and obviously were successful in that. So I concur that having Ms. Johnson, or you know, whatever that looks like, what kind of practices she put into place already that the other middle schools need to do, and just make it a day-one practice, because again, this isn't an option. This is literally against the law. And so, we need to do everything we can to also educate our parents that if your student responds in the middle of the day, essentially they've just broken the law. So are you okay with that? Like, not wearing their seatbelt. If you had a high school or not wearing their seatbelt on the way, that's also against the law. So like, we have to come up with some kind of correlation that's actually gonna make this have some teeth to it. And then, I think you already have the step discipline and all, and it'll be treated just like a regular disciplinary infraction if they're caught with their phone, cause again, the law is the law. And so, whether they like it or not, this is what's happening.
Yes ma'am. I just have one other update. My last one is the prior expulsions, it was missing from the original draft, and so I went ahead and I added it to this draft. And so, those are all the updates that I have. So now I will turn it over to Dr. Curly, who will present the implementation plan. Thank you.
Board Member Thrower has a question for you.
It's not a question, thank you for the presentation. It is a reflection, actually. When I first got on the board, and whoever was sitting up here with me at that time, we had very robust discussion about the damage of cellphone use, and how rampant and problematic it was becoming. It's too bad in my mind that it took an actual law to cover something that we already knew. There was so much data already that completely justified the need to do this seven years ago. And how we chose to do it at the time was because enforcement is so difficult to make it optional, you know, for schools, encouraged but optional. And I'll just take Fort King, for example. Fort King is a transformed campus, now that they have put much stricter boundaries in place for cellphone use. So it won't be that difficult for them to continue to move forward. I am so grateful that this is finally happening. You know, Board Member James, you hit the nail on the head. Supposedly mature adults struggle with. How can we expect this? And I think you also shared, like, the average age that a kid now has a cellphone. Did you, please don't say that this is true, five years old?
Oh, I have, I mean, I have students at my preschool who are age five, and they come to school. They attempt, I mean, they, we pick them up from aftercare. There's a specific student at Madison Street, Dr. Curly will know who I'm speaking about, who was in VPK last year, and he has a cellphone. He literally don't know his numbers, so I don't know what he's doing with it, but he has a cellphone, yes.
And also too, I think it's very important to provide some reassurance to parents that we have Skylert systems now, incredible ways to communicate out with their fam-- with our families. If you really need to reach your child about something, there is a way to do that. And I know schools will become even more creative about making sure that that open line of communication actually happens, so we don't get the phone calls and complaints that, well, I called the school and they didn't, you know. In the long run, this is going to be transformational, and I'm just grateful. And, gosh, sometimes a change grinds so slowly. So when you get there, you need to celebrate it, because this has been a long time in coming.
Yes ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board Chair Conrad, Board members, Dr. Brewer. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I first wanna start by thanking Ms. Lugo Hampton for her incredible work with this, and I am just getting up to speed, and she's done a great job getting me up to speed. I'm sure it's been frustrating for her to try to feed me to all this information and the work that she's done. Before I talk about, a little bit about the implementation plan, I'll speak about the issue that you're just talking about. And during our principals' meeting yesterday, we stressed with the principals the very fact that you're talking about right now. And we had them in individual groups, both elementary and then secondary. And we broke them up specifically because of those issues and how they cellphone applied, or the cellphone use policy, or wireless communication devices applied. And they heard very clearly from us exactly what those expectations were. I also had the opportunity to sit down with both Ms. Johnson and Mr. Carter at their schools this summer and discuss their policies. And during the meeting yesterday, we referenced Ms. Johnson and her policies there to all of the other principals as to a best-case scenario and how to handle these going forward. Yes, it will be a lot of work, in the beginning, front-loaded work, but I do believe that the schools are all very well-prepared to meet that challenge and implement it, which is a good segue into the implementation plan. And hearing your comments in the last work session, I knew how important the implementation plan was to all of you across the board. So you do have that within your packet there. And the four main points of the implementation plan being communication, training and professional development, support and monitoring, feedback, and continuous improvement. So we have already begun this process specifically with number one, which is communication. So the two points that I wanna draw out there, number one, is we work with the Technology Department, and they are currently implementing an acknowledgement through Skyward. And that will exist for all people that access their Skyward account. Students, faculty and staff, as well as parents if and when they log into their account. Now, if they access their students' account prior, and instead of accessing their own individual parent access in Skyward, they would not see that. However, every other person that accesses their Skyward account at the point in which it is live, will then be required to acknowledge receipt of the Code of Conduct. Additionally, we are having placed, when it is fully approved and live, we are having placed on every school's website, the banner that includes the twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six Student Code of Conduct, which will be linked, and then it will take them directly to that. Of course, with Ms. Lugo's work as well, we've worked with technology to create, everything is linked within the Code of Conduct. So when you go to each topic heading, and you select it, it automatically opens you up and takes you there digitally. So it's much more easily accessible, and I know one of the concerns that was brought up in the last work session was, it's not in paper anymore, and they don't have it in their hands, and they're not signing that acknowledgement. I believe with these new portions that we've put in, it's almost better. In fact, we can see and track that digital acknowledgement. Previously, yes, we did have them sign them, and we kept a record there, but as we know, those can get lost, or something can happen to them, or they don't turn it in, or something. This, we have a digital record that they sign in, they acknowledge it, which would be tied back to every single individual. And with the new digital Code of Conduct it being linked, it's much easier to find the topics that you need to find. So we have begun this process, again, yesterday. We are gonna do it again next week at the Assistant Principals' Meeting, following the same format that we did yesterday. And then, on pre-week, pre-week with all of our student service managers. Part of the topic yesterday, in addition to wireless communication, was this implementation plan. And every school will have a very specific plan with both their faculty and staff in pre-week to roll out the new Student Code of Conduct, and then with their students as they return in that first week of school. We specifically referenced, and I even referenced as being a teacher, and reading off different portions of the Code of Conduct to each classes I had every period as they came to me. And that was referenced. So every single school will have a very specific plan, and how they will implement it individually to their faculty and staff during pre-week, and then eventually to their students the first week of school.
And Chair, can I ask a quick question or comment? Most schools do break up the Code of Conduct, or their in-house procedures or policies, and kind of go through a PowerPoint of sorts at least one day. And to be honest, I'm thinking mostly of secondary, specifically high school. So as I reference these next comments, I'm really thinking about at least nine-twelve, but maybe six-twelve. I would love to see the students guided through logging into their Skyward account in one of the periods in which we start this, so that not only are they getting access to their Skyward account so they can take accountability for their grades and all of that, but then, when they log in, there will be a little box, and they can click the little box. So maybe they do this in the last period that they go through the presentation, but it would then, essentially, every kid who's present would then log into Skyward. We make sure that they have access to Skyward, and then upon logging in, at the completion of the review for that day, they would click the box to acknowledge they've received it. And that would, in my opinion, capture a whole lot of secondary kids, ensuring, and we figure out how do we get password reports, and how do we, you know, circumvent all those little things, but I'm sure there's a way we could do that for kids who don't know their passwords, or reset, or whatever. And let's take some time to troubleshoot that with a teacher and the students, so that we can get them into Skyward, make them accountable for being aware of their grades, and then also, they'll have to acknowledge the Code of Conduct.
Yes, absolutely, and it probably could be added as a tile in the desktop. I'd have to have conversations with technology to see if and when and how, but I do believe that that would be possible. You bring up a good point, there's a huge differentiation between elementary and secondary students in this respect. I know that secondary students, having one of my own currently and one previous, that they utilize their Skyward access continually, and they have it, I mean, maybe it's a good example, maybe it's not, on their phones, that they access, and they, my daughter can quickly pull that up and see her schedule and go to her Skyward access, so I think that's a good way to acknowledge it. At Madison Street, and we have a technology class as well, that every single student from kindergarten through fifth goes through every week. And we utilize that class to do something just like this, accessing email, those types of things. Unfortunately, we don't have that at every elementary level, but it is a possibility, certainly at secondary level, to be able to take them to that and show them. So I do think it's a good idea.
I agree. Hundred percent.
The other portion that I wanted to draw attention to was the disciplinary response level for three and four. It's a tab, there's one for elementary, it's kind of a, you referenced it as a one-pager. It's about midway through in your binder there, there's one for elementary and one for secondary. And those are a reference guide for the response levels or actions for specific behaviors at the level, at level three or four. And so that was added as well. We did share that as well with principals yesterday, and they were appreciative of that as well. They don't feel that it hamstrings them in any way, or puts them in a, you know, in a corner. They do feel like it's good. And in some situations, when we talked a lot about this communication, how they're communicating things to parents, we told them to be very open and honest and upfront when an infraction at these levels occur, that they can speak specifically that there are mandates that sometimes require, are required based on their students' actions.
Love that.
I'm looking real quick, but maybe, Ms. Lugo, I'm sure probably has it on the back of her head, hand, but, so sexual offense, non-repeated. Because on this one-pager is sexual offense repeated, it's listed for both mandatory expulsion as a four P, and then mandatory alt placement as a three N. But what is the code for a sexual offense first timer?
We're using the same code as the first timer, but we know that they are gonna go in diversion. And so, the student discipline team, when they're looking for those, when they get that second offense, that packet will say that, and it is our practice to look at referrals and previous referrals, so, and verify that it is their second time. So those are the processes that we'll put in place to differentiate the two.
And where is that in the code?
It's the same code, so we're using, for sexual offenses still--
Where is the diversion? Where is it, where is it written in here, that a first-time offense for a three N is diversion?
If you look, it's on page twenty-three, it just said--
If you look at the definition for sex offense--
Yep.
Yeah.
Sexual offense, level three.
And then, in the possible corrective actions, it lists diversion. It doesn't, it doesn't explain what diversion is--
Well, possible corrective actions, it says see corrective range on page thirty-one.
If you look at mandatory actions, it says diversion, it's the, almost to the bottom. And then also, for level four, you'll see diversion there as well.
But not repeated mutual. If it's not your first time, yes.
If it's your first time, you're getting diversion, yes.
Okay, so it's listed here for diversion. Okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
You're welcome.
No, I'm not done, I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
So, mandatory alternative, mandatory alternative placement, three N, sexual offense repeated on the one-pager for a secondary. But on page twenty-three--
Okay.
Sexual conduct repeated. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So, we have four different offenses on page twenty-three.
We have--
There are level three and two that are level four, right?
Correct.
So, a repeated lewd and lascivious has a mandatory alt placement.
Correct.
Okay. Well, is the term recommendation then just a term that we use? Because if it's a mandatory, I think it's, it is contradictory to say that we're gonna recommend for alt placement, and then it is a mandatory alt placement. Is that because the board takes the action?
Correct. And so, the verbiage always from student discipline is the recommendation, because the recommendation comes to us, but it is the school board that finalizes that.
Okay, so then diversion is available for lewd and lascivious and mutual sexual conduct at the three and the four?
Correct. First offense.
Well, yes, because if it's not first offense, then it's repeated.
Correct.
And then that, there is no diversion, and then there are mandatory consequences as indicated on the one-pager?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to talk that through to make sure I understood it completely, cause I know we spent a lot of time on it last time.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, and for my clarification, cause this, what I understood was that coming out of the principal's office, they are recommending expulsion, or alt placement, or what have you, but if it's a first offense, the discipline team that gets that packet is the backstop.
Correct, it's very similar to supportive enforcement for drugs.
Right.
So they are going to write an alternative placement packet for that student. That packet reaches us, and then we process it as diversion if it's the first time. And if it's repeated, we actually will process it as an alt placement.
Right, and so, parent contact, and as far as getting the letter and all of that doesn't happen until it leaves your office, as opposed to like, the principal sending those letters to say that they're being recommended for-- I, cause I'm just curious how that plays out, if the principal sends out something to the family, but then it gets to you guys, and you actually are changing the punishment.
So what normally happens is they do inform the parent that they are putting, turning in a packet for alternative placement, and that they can possibly get in lieu of alternative placement this diversion.
Okay. I think that captures what I was looking for. And thank you for the work on the fighting and the self-defense and all of that, cause I can see that work was put in, and we had a lot of opinions about that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Is diversion defined in the definition section?
We no longer have a glossary, it is not defined. It is defined in internal documents, and in our internal processes.
So, I guess what I meant, so if we go back to fighting, and then we put self-defense definition above fighting, because self-defense is most appropriately defined next to fighting, which was when you would do self-defense. Is it possible to do a definition for sexual diversion above page thirty, twenty-three as a header? Or wherever it's appropriate, it doesn't look like it's appropriate for sexual explicit material. So, wherever diversion is going, sexual diversion, and then, we have drug diversion still. So, could we add, like we did for self-defense, a definition of sorts for the term? Cause that's essentially what we did with self-defense, right? We explained to some capacity what self-defense was.
We did, the only difference is, is that self-defense is an action where diversion is, it is, in essence, a consequence. We're educating them, that's in lieu of the consequence. So I believe that it's important that we understand that, yes, they're doing diversion in lieu of alternative placement or expulsion.
If maybe I can clarify, so I think the example is-- If, if maybe I can clarify. So I, I think the example is self-defense is something that the student did. They defended themselves. Diversion is something that we are providing for them. So in essence, we provided a definition for self-defense because it was an action that was taking place by the student. The student is not, the student didn't do diversion. They are being provided diversion as an option to a consequence that they were getting at, or potential consequence.
So if I put myself in the shoes of a parent whose child has gotten a 3N and I'm trying to advocate for my child, and so I go to this document and I go to page twenty-three and I'm looking at the mandatory actions. And I want to know what diversion is. How do I figure that out? Maybe I know what parent contact and all these other things are, but I don't know what diversion is. So how do I know what that is?
Right. We, we are office with that, have that conversation with them and explain to them what that is. I, I think much like out of schools, out of school suspension as a consequence, also supportive enforcement. It is not defined specifically there, but we explain that to them.
Okay.
And the schools are empowered to give this information as we talked about openly. We wanted them to be open about you, your student is being recommended for alternative placement. Your student is being recommended for expulsion. And to be open and upfront with them. And they also have the autonomy to have the, these conversations with them, that this is a potential possibility for your student. And that we can give them the more specific information in regards to what their potential consequences may be.
Okay. I, I think for the future, not for now, but for the future, having a consequence glossary to understand what's the difference between ISS and OSS. What's the difference between lunch detention or after-school detention or Saturday school? Diversion, all of these different terms that we internally use. And then coming from working in discipline previously myself, you, the students pretty much acquire the language, but sometimes there's a barrier for the parent or the guardian. And so if we had a way to, a one pager that again said, you know, definitions of consequences, definitions may vary slightly on each campus, because obviously ISS looks different at Madison Street than it does at Howard Middle School, right? And so understanding that, but I think that in the future that might be helpful. So that, I always love a way that we can empower parents to find information on their own. Because sometimes, I feel like I sound like Reverend Cummings now, but sometimes reaching out to staff or making that connection and those kinds of things can be challenging. So if we had a resource that we could say, here's a definition of all of the different terms, I think it just supports a productive environment.
I completely agree. In the processes part of the Code of Student Conduct, there are the exact process and a definition for in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. I'll be more than happy to also add supportive enforcement as well as diversion.
Well, and it doesn't need, I mean, if it's easy, sure. I'm just saying, it doesn't need to delay anything. So if it needs, if it delays anything, then certainly it's not a necessity right now. But just in the future, that's my particular thought.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Mr. O.
As, as I've been sitting here listening and, and thinking through, and I'm looking on page, you know, twenty-three at the top, lewd or lascivious, level three. And then I see possible corrective actions. And see corrective action range on page thirty-one. And then underneath that it says diversion. And I thought to myself, well, would diversion in, in lieu of, in lieu of alternative placement, you know, be appropriate to put anywhere? Because I was thinking to myself, well, what would be situations where they're recommended for alternative placement? But what would be situations where then they chose to take the alternative placement? Or where we chose to implement the alternative placement? I can't think of too many of those. And I guess it would turn into an alternative placement if diversion ended up being the consequence, but the kid never showed up.
So there, yeah, there are two. There are two instances where it would result in an alt placement. And that is if they, if they don't want to do the diversion, they do have that option. The parent does have that option. And if they fail to do the work.
Right. Because it is a little confusing to me. Like it's an automatic that the packet gets taken to you. And I think you call it a backstop, which I thought was a great definition. But, but nowhere am I seeing in, you know, diversion in lieu of alternative placement. To me, that would just make it a little bit more clear. But I don't know. Again, I don't want it to change the trajectory of the timeline, but figured I'd run it up the flagpole and see what happens.
Okay. Dr. Brewer, did you, you were kind of leaning forward.
I, I am, because I believe, and I'll let Dr. Curly weigh in, but I believe those are appropriate changes that we could easily, easily add. But I'll let Dr. Curly provide that answer.
Yes, absolutely. Those are simple fixes that we can put in immediately.
And it would provide clarity.
And it would, it won't delay anything.
Right.
I did.
Yes.
And I just want to say one more thing that, and you all know this, but this committee, Cynthia began this, this committee work back in January. She has worked with so many of our community members that have been consist, that have consistently attended the meetings and provided input. And the school administrators. And so I, I'm just incredibly grateful for all of the committee's work on that, led by Cynthia. She's just done an incredible job. And Dr. Curly's sessions yesterday were fantastic. And so the work has already begun for them to truly understand the high important, importance of this implementation plan. So thank you all for your feedback and I'm looking forward to the rollout of this Code of Conduct this year.
Thank you. Yes. She has one more.
Just to confirm, when is this going to be available? Please say before the start of school.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Curly.
It, it will be, once you all give consensus, it is up and ready to go for all to view in draft copy. Obviously, it says draft on the copy, but it is up and accessible. We discussed that yesterday as well, because we knew that we were coming back to you all this morning. So that it is available for viewing. However, it won't be officially approved, of course, until you all vote on it. But it will be available and ready to go. We will not wait on implementing especially things like we discussed, such as the wireless communication device policy. Because to your point, Dr. Campbell, that's law already. Regardless of whether we have it in a, an approved Code of Conduct, our Code of Conduct can't usurp or the other way around a law anyway. So schools are ready to go with that right away.
I was thinking in terms of the first couple of days of school and how critical they are for the kids to be taught this as part of the, you know, the first days of school procedures and expectations. And we've been working on this since January with, I believe, a committee of at least forty-two people. And I know that there have been some, some delays and meetings that couldn't take place, according to my understanding. And I don't know, you know, if, if this isn't out there and ready for teachers to teach it, starting the first day of school. I mean, I'm all about public notice and timelines and everything, but this is pretty integral to our success. And I, I did get the voicemail yesterday, but I just kind of wanted to have a quick conversation publicly. I, I'm not very comfortable with not having this approved and, and out there for teachers to start teaching it the first day of school. I mean, I welcome the rest of the board's feedback.
Well, from a public hearing perspective, I don't think, I think we're backed into the public hearing timeline, right?
Yes.
We, there's no circumventing the.
No, in order, in order to have had it ready for a public hearing, the public hearing requires just that we notice a public hearing for twenty-eight days before. Twenty-eight days before August twelfth would have been yesterday. So it would have to then be now noticed. There still needs to be notice of the public hearing. The public hearing is the day that you will adopt it. And it will need to be noticed twenty-eight days before the next available meeting, which would be the twenty-fourth.
Well, we could schedule a special meeting. I mean, we do that all the time. Please.
But the special meeting would have to be scheduled with a twenty-eight day notice of public hearing. So you could pick.
Can we make a spe, can we do, can we, something we can do today to like schedule a thing? So then it's like the August thirteenth?
Yeah, we could have done it yesterday, but we didn't. So we can, we can schedule, but we have to give notice of a public hearing. So the notice would have to be published and the notice of public hearing would have to, would, would it have to be twenty-eight days before the hearing that we set?
When's the next time we can publish a notice?
Twenty-fifth?
And does it have to be published in the Gazette?
It would, does not, but it would have to be put on an agenda. And so if we were going to put it on an agenda, we would put it on the agenda for this Tuesday. But we would have had to have done that yesterday.
Correct.
So we currently have it planned to, and it might already be on there today, to, to add the schedule of public hearing on the July twenty-second agenda. And then that would allow us the twenty-eight days to have the public hearing take place on August twenty-sixth. Dr. Curly has shared with the principals that all of this information will be provided to them so they can include it in their, like you said, back-to-school messaging, all of their first and second day procedures under draft form. And then when the item is approved by you on August twenty-sixth, we will then email that document, similar to the way we did yesterday with the commissioners, the Commissioner of Education's letter. We will email that approved Code of Student Conduct to all of our families to ensure they have the board-approved document.
I'm, I'm sorry. Just talk me through this for a second. The notification for the publication of the public hearing has to occur in a board meeting, correct? And that's when the twenty-eight day window starts?
Yes.
Yes.
And at the time of notification, the draft copy has to be available for the public.
Okay. Okay. So at, because we missed the twenty-second, we're planning on providing the notification in what meeting again?
No, we're, it's going down the twenty-second. Chair Conrad approved for us to add this to the July twenty-second to schedule the public hearing.
And then what?
The twenty-eight days after that is the nineteenth. We already have a scheduled meeting on the twenty-sixth, but I just did, I mean, I counted it out. If we wanted to call a special board meeting on the nineteenth.
Yes, please.
We could make that happen. So at least it would be.
One week.
I can do the nineteenth.
I can do the nineteenth, any day, any time other than three o'clock when I meet with Dr. Brewer.
So it doesn't matter.
So we just need three. Dr. Brewer, are you available on the nineteenth?
I'm sure.
I, I mean, I, I would have to, at eight AM, I can do on the nineteenth for sure.
I mean, yeah, if we did like a nine a.m. morning meeting.
Count, count me down, Attorney Powers, if I miss the number, but I think that's twenty-eight days.
Elena's shaking her head, no.
It is twenty-eight days, but the ad would have had to been placed by Wednesday, the sixteenth, which would have been yesterday at noon.
Wednesday, the sixteenth for what?
To put the ad in.
Right. But that, we've already, we've already noticed the meeting. We don't have to do a newspaper ad for the public hearing. We, if we add it to our agenda and put it on the website, correct?
No, we still have to do a rulemaking ad.
What we've done.
But we have, we have to for a rulemaking, right?
That is correct.
For a rulemaking, it is.
That is, that is how it's been done in the past. Rulemaking has to be done. So if you're talking the nineteenth, if you count back twenty-eight days, the ad would have to run on the Friday, which would be this Friday, the eighteenth, which meant that the ad would have had to been placed yesterday by noon in order to do the nineteenth, as Ms. Campbell, Dr. Campbell is suggesting.
And so there hasn't already been any notification that was like a proof of publication or whatever stating we were doing a public hearing for the Code of Conduct?
Yes, there was for the twenty-second.
Okay. So couldn't we edit that ad?
Well, that's what I was going to say, because there's already been an ad.
Right.
No, you can't, you can't edit it at this point.
Well, I understand that, but there's, has already been an ad for a public hearing.
There's been an ad for a public hearing. Now, the only thing that we must do is twenty-eight days before that public hearing, there must be, the agenda item must be available for the public to view, to comment.
Understood. So again, and maybe, I'm not a lawyer. I play one on TV. So because there has already been an, an ad paid for, bought and paid for on the public hearing for the Code of Student Conduct, it said we were having that public hearing on July twenty-second. Instead, what? Well, it, it doesn't matter the twenty-eight days at that point. But there has already been an ad saying we're doing July twenty-second. Instead, on July twenty-second, we are then going to now schedule the public hearing. But we've already, I mean, we'll, we'll do another ad. That's fine. We can do another ad saying the actual public hearing is happening on a different day. But, I mean, there has been an ad about a public hearing. It just is not happening on the day the ad said.
Well, I spent two hours yesterday going through what has and hasn't been done.
Yeah.
And so we're throwing in a lot of ifs and I can't verify's. So I would not be comfortable giving that information right now.
Okay.
I can't tell you. I've got to look and find out what's been done, compare it to what those countdown days are. And the answers I gave yesterday, I can stand by. The, what, what are the things that might happen depends on factors that I wasn't privy to.
I just, I wanted to say in this conversation, as it's so, for me personally, it's so important for our staff to have this and our, our students to have it. It's such a big piece of everything that comes to us. It's also important that the community has the correct amount of time if they so choose to look at the finalized document.
There is, there is no problem with giving a draft document to schools, ones that we believe is likely after our two work sessions to have been approved as a go-forward for the, by the school board with consensus. There's no problem with providing that draft copy to parents and students, even as of the start of school. The problem is, is that it will, does not, it does not, you don't vote on it and it doesn't become official until the twenty-eighth.
So then, while we're having open discussion, Chair, sorry. So then, if we have students that get in a fight on August fifteenth.
Got a problem.
And we have a huge problem. So any discipline infractions that might occur in the first two weeks of school, if we're waiting till August twenty-sixth, have to revert back to the old code because that's all we've approved. So if there's a sexual offense, there is no diversion option for them, because that's not something, so.
I mean, I feel comfortable saying, if it comes before us, to say, this is, this is coming to pass. We're going to make this accommodation, because it's, that's what we have asked to come forward.
I agree. It's just they're going to have a really strong leg to stand on for.
But I mean, I feel pretty strongly about doing it correctly. I mean, this is a big, this is a big item.
I certainly don't think, I think for sure, we're using the twenty-four code until the board approves a twenty-five code. Like, without a doubt. And then discretion can be made, as it always is, which is what we go back to all of the time, in a packet, if it's, because realistically, there's a whole lot of consistency from twenty-four to twenty-five. It looks a lot different, but from a implementation standpoint, there's a lot of consistency. There are some nuances, diversion being one of them. And so I think by the time, by the way, the board sees the expulsion packet, diversion will be approved, because there's.
That's a very good point.
Even if the offense happened on the first day of school, there's not a chance before the twenty-second, the board is going to, and so we will as a board, make a decision based on that packet. But I think the packet should be brought forth to the board based on the current code. Yes.
Yes.
And I would love to backwards plan more appropriately, so that we avoid these kinds of things in the future.
Yes, Ms. O.
Thank you. And since I take full responsibility for opening this can of worms.
You did, you did.
It is, the Code of Student Conduct is a linchpin and, and it's something that we struggle with mightily as a board. And so I agree that we can't, we're putting ourselves in a bad position to say, well, you know, the, the draft was out there, so that's what we're, we can't do that. We, we, if it, until it's board-approved, then I, I just don't think that it's appropriate to do it any other way. So what's really appropriate is to make sure, and I would love to be informed as a board member prior, that if it looks like we're going to have trouble meeting the timeline, you know, to have this ready to go for the first day of school, that the board gets the opportunity, like we always love to say, we're not afraid to have a special meeting as long as we have three. We can get this done. This is so pivotal and, and it's huge work and so many people. To not have it ready on day one, I'm not comfortable with at all. And so I look forward to this never happening again.
I, I'll respond to that. I, this is, this was definitely our staff's error. It, we fully are prepared for a July twenty-second public hearing. It was not added to board docs appropriately to schedule that public hearing. So it, it is our error. We, we recognize that. We do apologize for that. And I do appreciate Attorney Power spending the time yesterday. And Elena Martinez Young, they spent a lot of time working with us to try to make, trying to find the best solution, so. But yes, we, this should not have happened.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know we are really trying to avoid to having meetings and, and shortening up the notice and things like that for all kinds of reasons. But for something like this, you know, there's so many situations where the ones that really need to read it aren't worried about public notice either. So.
And I know that's true, but I still, I'm not comfortable cutting corners on this item.
Right. So we just need to do it right next time and then every time after that. It's just too big a piece of what we do and it brings so much to everything and everybody everywhere across our district. All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Can we, Kim, before we complete this topic, can we hear? Can we, Kim, before we complete this topic, can we hear that everyone is in consensus? So, at least our conversations to the school, we can use the word that the board is in consensus of the revisions to the Code of Student Conduct?
Yeah. I think we just, we're gonna add-
The glossary.
A little glossary or whatever we were talking about.
In lieu of diversion, if that-
Uh, consequence glossary and division, uh, diversion in lieu of, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work. I know, I just wanna say, Ms. Lugo has kind of been the, the backbone of this department for the last year, as it has gone through a wide array of changes in top leadership, and you have steadfastly maintained presence and working on this, and you've come before the board, and you've taken the, taken the arrows, and I appreciate your consistency and willing to continue to do this work, and I think Dr. Curley's gonna be a great partner for you, so.
I thank you very much. It's been a pleasure coming to Marion County.
I, I just wanna reiterate because this piece, this discipline piece is, for me personally as a board member, is the most challenging piece, and so I know there's lots of hours, lots of times, lots of conversation that's been put into helping this run smoother and be better, more productive for our students, so I just wanted to thank you all, so, thank you.
Hopefully, you're seeing as arrows of compassionate concern and not arrows of poison and then flames.
We're just, we're all trying to get the job done right.
We are, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
Ms. Lugo, I, I will let you know, I'm, I'm doing a little bit of research right now. I may suggest another option to the board during my board comments, so if you can just be watching, I'll make sure that I let them know about timelines, so that may cure some of what we're, what we've been talking about today.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, but Attorney Powers, you're, you're up next, our next item.
Oh, yes.
Sorry to interrupt your research. You, and I know you just have a brief statement you wanted to share with us.
Yes, ma'am. Let me pull up what I've got here.
Based, based on that last statement, Attorney Powers, the ad, the ad has been sent to the O'Callaghan Gazette for August 26 public hearing.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind.
Understood. Yeah, and I'll, I'll discuss it during the comments anyway. I don't think it's gonna matter.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just need one moment, apologize for the- Okay, the board had asked for me to give routine progress reports on the workforce housing discussion, and I wanted to report to the board that as of July 2nd, I met via a Teams meeting with the attorneys for Upward Communities, as well as the owner and two of his staff, and also Ms. Usher was on that Teams meeting call as well. They had not previously responded to the red line copies that I sent to everyone here. They had not previously responded and just asked that we have a more broad and global discussion at our Teams meeting. So, we began that, but, you know, lacking any specific changes that they suggested. We discussed some of the broad, high-level difficulties or, or challenges that staff had questions or concerns about. Ms. Usher also related a number of those to them as well. So, at that point, they indicated that they would take some time to review, they'd review the red lines, they'd review what the business model that they were putting in their lease agreement was, they would look into what changes they might wish to make on their side and coordinate with staff to help to resolve any questions or concerns that they might have, so that we could decide on a business owner and move forward. So, as of this point, I have not heard any, anything back. I don't believe staff has been additionally contacted either. So, I'll, I, I knew that they indicated it could take a little bit of time, but I have not yet had any further responses.
All right.
So, nothing more to report or discuss today.
Sure.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Yes.
Sure. My only question is just, it's almost to Dr. Brewer, I guess, because, I mean, I believe we have, at least the majority of us wanting to move forward with this, so do you have who the business owner will be if we decide to move forward, and, and so that way, that, that piece of it is already taken care of?
We've, we have met with Mr. Blackman and Attorney Powers, we're working through, we provided a, two pages of questions and concerns that we had as a leadership team, and so we're working, Mr. Blackman's working with Powers, Attorney Powers, to see which questions he has already addressed, based on the questions we have. And then at that time, if we, if we do want to move forward with this project, we will identify a business owner. But they are currently working on those questions and concerns at this time.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, you're saying if we choose, and I think at least the majority of us have already said, no, we've chosen. So, I, I think there is a little bit of discrepancy between an elected and appointed superintendent in that thought process, maybe, so I just, I, and I understand that, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, and there isn't the majority of us that wanna move forward with this project, but if the majority of the board is saying, this is something, I'm, I'm gonna use an analogy, and, and if, in fact, we choose to move forward with this and, or we say, nope, we don't want to, I don't want to be known as a part of the school board that looks like what the county commission that did not agree to the Walmart Distribution Center and the county commission that did not agree to the New York Yankees. Like, this is potentially that kind of legendary partnership that will transform this district in ways that we haven't seen before. And so, that's where I am with it. I'm, I'm sorry, I know we don't have a ton of information yet. I know that us even seeing the red lines were a bit preemptive because they hadn't even responded. So, we, we got information way ahead of the game, in a way, because we wanted to be. We wanted to be up to date in what was happening, but the fact that we've gotten them, we all, I mean, he had 100 and some odd red lines, so, I mean, we know there's a ton of questions left to be answered. Some of it, again, is that they've never done work in the state of Florida, and so what they do in Texas is different than the state of Florida. But, anyway, that's where this board member sits. I, I don't know what that discrepancy is between the if and the yes, so.
And if I can, I agree with Dr. Campbell. I walked away from that meeting hearing a majority of the board say that we want to move forward. So, it's the how, not the if, in my opinion. I, I believe I heard the majority of the board say, let's figure it out, let's go through, let's problem solve, let's work out the kinks, let the attorney's attorney, and figure it out. But the majority of us said, we want this to come to Marion County Public Schools. So, I did not hear it being an if, personally.
I, I believe the, the if, or just answering the questions, like you stated, there were pages and pages of questions, and the attorneys are working through those to determine our next steps. So, Attorney Powers can clarify, but they're working through those questions right now.
Move forward without a business owner, because what I'm, what I'm feeling is, there's a lot of trepidation on coming from our staff, because there's pages and pages of questions, and they don't wanna take it on as a business owner. So, what is, what is the next step?
Yeah, I, I'll have to double-check and make sure I didn't miss an email, but I don't think I've received those questions. We did discuss some of them. I don't think I have a, an actual list.
A hard copy.
But regardless, in, in, in concept, I know what most of them are, because those concerns have been expressed in meetings that I've had with staff. So, many of them are already reflected in the red line that I've, I've sent, so it requires-
Because of confidentiality, they didn't have a copy of, right?
Right.
There was some confidentiality issue, so-
Frankly, at, at this point, Ms. Usher has that as well, but I've, I've, I've tried not to, I've tried not to circulate drafts, so we have a, a number of people all trying to put input into something that a core set of people are trying to solve. So, the core set of people that would be Ms. Usher from facilities, she expressed some very good questions, including whether this would be defined as a P-3, public-private partnership or not. There's some differences between Texas and Florida law on that, and how we go about it and what it would have to do, what, whether it would go through staff or whether it would go through the board alters, depending on, I mean, our board policy even expresses it and Florida statute expresses. There are differences with a P-3 as opposed to some other models of concept. So, we didn't even get clarity as to whether this truly is intended as a P-3 model or not. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that we're still working on, and it's gonna require that, sort of, the way I feel is, we've kinda hit the tennis ball back in their direction, and they need to analyze and answer some of those questions in order to be able to present us with something that might address those concerns. So-
One question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and, and so the, maybe it needs to be reiterated back to them that the board is ready to continue moving forward, and according to my understanding, there's a red line document that you're waiting for feedback on, and that sounds quite lawyerly to me, and that until those types of things, until we get some response from them, we don't know, really, I don't think we're ready for a business owner, because we're not even, we're still slogging through the legalese. And when that time comes, then we'll, we're gonna need to assign a business owner. It's our intention to move forward, but, but if, if they're taking forever or too long, in our opinion, then maybe it just needs to be reiterated back to them that we really are serious about wanting to do this. So, when can we expect the answers to the, to the red lines? Let's get a timeline going here.
Well, I think that it was made a little bit more clear with Ms. Usher's participation in our Teams meeting, because she brought up some things which show the sort of crucial nature of why you have to have a business owner in these things. There are aspects regarding her 30 years of expertise that, that she was quick to be able to add further depth to the questions I already, I had already asked, and, and then be able to respond to some of the other concerns that that brings up. So, it's not, it's not, I wouldn't say I completely agree that it's, that once the lawyer stuff is figured out, we need a business owner, because the business owner really needs to be involved in the process. I'm getting that with help from Ms. Usher, but what I need is, the things that have already been expressed and that are out there, I need specific responses to.
Right.
I don't need the hop-on-a-phone-call-broad-brush-stroke level anymore. I need specific responses, and if those specific responses lead us down a different path, then I've expressed and the board's expressed, we're more than willing to try to, to try to fish out what that path is and, and go to it. But it requires some specific answers to what we've, what we've already asked.
Okay, and based on that, because there's different areas of expertise, it sounds like, that are needed, and typically, there's only one business owner, right? And this is so new and pretty innovative, I, I don't know if it warrants having a co-owner. I, I, I'm just trying to get to a pinpoint of how to keep this moving, because I feel like that's what the board is asking for.
Well, and there was, it's not my role to appoint a business owner. If I had to, based on what their, what I see here out of this document, it seems that the most logical role would be through facilities, because it's heavily involved there. Part of their business model, though, is designed specifically in order to be related to HR, and, and, and so, you know, yes, there might be, I mean, I don't see any problem with appointing more than one or, or having multiple staff assistants, and I don't, I haven't gotten any impression they wouldn't do that, but what-
Facilities, I just wanna finish my thought, maybe facilities would be the overall business owner, but it would be with the active participation because of the model of what they're proposing, that, you know, others are going to need to be on those calls and, and be part of it. It's a structure, I, I feel like we're struggling to get to. What is the structure to keep this?
And I, I think, and I hope this isn't too basic of an analogy, but if you decide that you really want a new vehicle, and you go down to look at, you know, get some recommendations, and you go down to a lot, and you're looking at multiple vehicles, you're gonna pick out the things that you think are within your range, the, the type of model that you like, does it have towing capacity if you need that? All those factors, you're gonna get that figured out. Then you're gonna go sit down to the contract and decide if there, are there any deal breakers in the contract, or things that you can't envision, and finance as well. So, I, I think at this point, we're still at the phase where we've looked a lot at, here's, here's some model contracts that will work, but, and, and we can argue over those terms, but we're not sure if, we're not sure if staff agrees on what product we're buying. We're not sure if, if they need a pickup truck, or an SUV, or a minivan, you know? We, we don't, we don't know, because we've got to, we've got to get better communication between them and our staff. So far, the communication has been between, you know, myself and their attorneys mostly, and the board, and, and, and the, and the corporation's owner, so.
Can the business owner not just be Attorney Powers until we finish this section of it, and then Attorney Powers is gonna pass it to Ms. Usher, so that we can button up the facilities part, and then we pass the torch on to the next person who needs to own it? I just feel like we're really overcomplicating this.
I'm not, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not, but I'm gonna say it. Board, if you cannot tell, nobody wants to own this item. There are so many challenges, we can't, you know, in my opinion, Upward spent quite a bit of time with each one of us and district staff. They wanted to push this through just as much as we initially were excited about it. So, the ball is in their court, we sent them the red lines, they have not gotten back to us. Nobody on our staff wants to be a business owner, because there's so many challenges, and maybe they, maybe those can be overcome. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, everything that comes before us has a recommendation from the superintendent, yes or no. We have not even given the staff the amount of time to go through this, see if the questions can be answered before it comes before us, and so I just-
I didn't know it was haste. I'm not pressuring haste. I thought, I mean, I certainly, I didn't even know this was gonna be on the agenda until I looked at the agenda, so I wasn't trying to pressure haste, I, I'm just assuming they're working on it.
I, I think they are working on it, but it is-
So, then what's the issue? I don't know what the issue is.
It's muddy. It is very muddy.
Lot of stuff we do is muddy.
I, I agree, I agree.
I mean, a lot of stuff we do is muddy, especially when you do it for the first time ever.
Right, so I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is that our staff has done, and at least to the best of my knowledge, our staff has done what was asked of them. They have volleyed this back to Upward. We are waiting on them to make the accommodations, or say whether they can or can't, are gonna-
Then what's the issue?
So-
Right, that's what I said.
Yeah.
So, I'm confused.
The only is, I'm sorry, the only issue that I now see, based on what Chair Conrad has just said, is no one from our staff wants to take this on. That's, that's very concerning to me as a board member, to say that the board wants something to happen and staff isn't willing to implement it. So, I'm hoping that over the course of the several weeks and or months it takes us to get some of these questions answered, that someone finds the strength and courage to do things that the board wants done, but I, I hear what you've just said, which is quite concerning to me. We are elected to do a job, and under an appointed superintendent model, they then implement the things that the elected officials request to be done. So, I, I appreciate it, I under, I understand, and this went off on a whole tangent, that all I did was ask who the business owner is gonna be, and clearly, that went us, took us in a whole different tangent. So, we'll just wait on Upward Communities. I, I would like to have a standing item, so we can get, and if there's nothing to report, there's nothing to report. I, I mean, it, it's, this is a huge undertaking, multi-million dollar, hundreds of millions of dollars project, potentially coming to our community. It's gonna take some work, I, I understand that, so I'm not afraid of it, though, and I think the rest of the board isn't either.
And so, so what I, what I was about to add before we had that conversation was just that, from a de facto perspective, Ms. Usher has graciously stepped in as a sort of business owner right now, because she is the one that's helping me look over the terms of the contract, looking at the things that I've already, the areas that I've already answered, and then letting me know additional staff questions that they might have, from a facilities perspective, because some of these factors, she and I have exactly the same concerns, but she may have seen some of those concerns addressed, or, or what happens if they're left unaddressed throughout her experience, and, and that's been helpful. So, you know, obviously, that's, it's just gonna take some, gonna take some additional time, and I have to wait until they, they respond. I don't wanna be in the position where I'm both advocating something for, to the board, while I also have a duty of responsibility to the board to be getting the best possible terms for the board, so.
Good. I, just one thing I wanna add to the conversation, because I don't, Dr. Campbell used the word scared, I don't, I don't think- Because I don't, Dr. Campbell used the word scared. I don't, I don't think the district is scared. I think that the district is protective. You know, we, we answer to the public. They have 46,000 students, 7,000 staff, that they're protective of too. And so, they just want to make sure that all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and that this is a solid opportunity before moving forward. So, I just, I wanted, I didn't, I didn't want to muddy the waters any further to make sure you have a clear picture of what's happened recently. Yes?
Sounds to me like what we're looking for are clear and responsive feedback to the red lines.
Yes.
And we don't have those yet.
Right. Because I, I can't, unless and until I have that kind of stuff, I, I, there's, let me put it this way, the recommendations and the discussions that we've had around the topic, because this is a new to Florida, and frankly, even in Texas, as you asked about last time, hasn't been completed through to, to groundbreaking. Some of the representations made about how this will look have changed. And that, that they've changed over time. How long a lease it would be. And, and that's mostly in part because they're, some of those are flexible things that we need to figure out. On the other hand, that also, if you get an idea in your mind that this is the way this will look, but then that is an evolving thing over time, you, you, you end up with a product that's very different than what you initially thought it was going to be. So, when, when they sat down with each Board member and they sat down with the Board here collectively and talked about what the community would look like, how long a lease it would be, a lot, a lot of factors, many of those things have, have changed fluidly throughout. You know, the, the amount of time, the amount of building, there, there's a lot of things that have altered. So, because of that, when I get a response in red line, I'm going to be able to say, that's the answer. It's not, oh, yes, we had a phone call and second, we remember we talked about that. Instead, I've got, I've got something I can lock in and say, if we're going to alter it, let's alter it here. So, yes, I'm waiting on those responses. And that requires them to sort of back up and, and review and figure out what areas they want to invest their time in altering and not.
Would it help you if the Board and that, and help the process? And would it be appropriate to say the Board would like to have some specific answers by within X number of days, weeks, months, years, whatever's appropriate? So that, again, we can begin sectioning this into some kind of timeline that we can begin to further, even further define.
Sure. To be fair, I mean, I don't want to give an artificial timeline. But I think that they've always expressed that they, they, they do want to work towards speed, but they want to also work toward making the best decisions. And some of what they're going to do is, I think, he expressed that he, when he was here last, it's expensive in a matter of attorney's fees and planning and everything else to get things up and rolling in a particular direction. He may be wishing to allocate his resources toward doing that internally within his company to come up with the best plan prior to going and expending $50,000 on attorney's fees to get them to figure it out with me. You understand? So...
I do. And we need to know that. You know, right now, it's just everywhere. And so, I guess I'm just counting on being able to, if, if you've already responded with red lines, to me, it would make sense to get a response from them. Either we're not ready to respond to this yet because we're doing what you just said instead. But, communication is a wonderful thing. Because now we've spent a lot of time sitting up here and a little finger pointing's gone on, and, and that's ridiculous. We just need some-
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out and, and ask if they're intending to, or when they might be able to get me a copy back for additional red lines. I didn't want to pressure them after the meeting when they specifically on the second indicated that they were going to take some time to look at, look over things and then get back to me. I didn't want to-
And that was on the second?
That was on the second.
We had a holiday.
Right.
We had a holiday.
We had a holiday, right, so...
Now, we've just had a work session and we've talked about it publicly, so now, a little follow-up would be great.
And then I agree with Dr. Campbell. Let's, just like superintendent search procedures, until we figure out where we are, let's just keep it on the work session agendas. You can report back all the things or none of the things, and we'll keep, we'll keep cooking.
Yeah. I, I just want to restate that we, we have spent quite some time on this. This is, this, it is an exciting opportunity. We all did our briefings with them, just like you all did. And, and we, we want to make sure the contract language is appropriate because it is a big commitment. So, I, I think, maybe we'll hear something soon from the red lines. But I know that Attorney Powers has spent countless hours on this, answering our questions and getting it, sending it back to them, so...
It's all warranted because this is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
This is, this, if, if we're going to pursue this, it's worth the investment of time.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and just from my perspective, I wasn't sure if we were now like just sort of getting bogged down and not having a clear, you know, okay, what's, what's the next action step or the next ask? And, and we've gotten really good about just having placeholders on agendas, you know, to keep it at the forefront.
And we have it on our executive cabinet agenda as well. And we've already agreed that it would be a, a running agenda item.
Great. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Is there any public comment on Upward Housing? Okay. Seeing none, our last item is superintendent search procedures. I'm happy to report that we agreed on a, a company, and I did not write it. I wrote down the acronym, but it's H-Y-A.
Yeah.
So, that's all I wrote down. I apologize. And Mr. Collins and Attorney Powers are going to work on finalizing that contract, and it should come to the Board on September 9th. So, just wanted to give you a quick, brief update on that. I have some dates, just some reminders for you. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? It's hard, you all, to remember when there's hardly anybody in the audience, so I apologize for that. Meeting reminders. The Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, or ICROC, is scheduled to meet later this afternoon at 4:00. There's a special school board meeting scheduled for July 22nd at 11:30 a.m. There's, the next school board meeting will be July 22nd, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. There's a public hearing for the tentative budget scheduled on July 29th, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. There's another special school board meeting scheduled on August 7th, 2025 at 7:00 a.m. With that, we'll go into Board comments. Ms. Martina Zhang?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Attorney Powers?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Brewer?
Yes. I have a few things to share. We are still working through our federal entitlements. We do not have complete clarification of that yet, but at this time, we are problem-solving how we will move forward with potential shortfalls there. Based on the numbers that we have received, we're looking at close to 6 million, close to 6 million that we will need to problem-solve. 4.3 million is with our salaries and benefits of people in those entitlements. So, we're working through that right now. We hope to have some answers soon as Ms. Boston Ellis also is finalizing her budget and will provide that balanced budget to you shortly. So, I wanted to provide you that information, and again, we are working on that behind the scenes. Our Wyamina teacher started, came back on Monday, and I think all of you have received the invitation, but there's a back-to-school bash next Monday, the, the 21st, between 1:00 and 3:00, so I hope you all can join us for that. And their students will begin on July 22nd. Also, this evening, Chair Conrad and I will attend the Teacher of the Year Gala in Orlando to recognize and celebrate Sarah Jacobs. She's the English teacher from Westport High School. And on August the 4th, the Horse Apple will be revealed back at Westport High School. So, that would be a great event, and I'll make sure you have that on your calendar. That's exciting. One more data point I'd like to share. We received this morning numbers from Marion Virtual School. As you know, that's another school choice option that we support and promote. This school year, we had 1,358 more courses completed than we did in the 23-24 school year. So, we're proud of that. We also returned 203 students back to their base schools for graduation. And that's up 61 students from the year before. So, another great job that we recognize. And sometimes those numbers don't show on our school grade calculations, but the school choice department through Marion Virtual is doing a great job. So, I wanted to recognize those, that department and those students working through Marion Virtual School. That's all my comments. Chair Conrad?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Dr. James?
Thank you. I wanted, based off of those comments, Dr. Brewer, is the Board going to receive any? The last time we had a budget conversation, there was a lot of question marks left, including, I think, 10-plus million dollars that we still had to figure out how to address. And then since that conversation, we got our budget information and we've, we've done a lot of work, but we haven't received an update. So, is the Board going to be receiving any level of update prior to Tuesday's meeting? Or is the expectation that we're going to receive information on Tuesday and then receive the tentative budget? Because I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Board, but there was a lot of question marks in our last conversation.
We also still haven't gotten the fourth calc yet. So, I mean, some of it is also out of Tallahassee that we're waiting on. But, I agree with you.
We, yeah, Ms. Boston Ellis is expecting to receive numbers by July 18th. And at that time, she can provide more information. But at this time, she has assured us that, and you know her, she will make it happen, that there will be a balanced budget.
I guess my question then is, if my memory treats me right, typically, the receiving of the budget is a formality and not a conversation. We, we kind of receive information and it's a formality. I personally still have a lot of questions then about how we figured it out. And so, if there's a way that she could do a level of a presentation potentially to just kind of go back, go back, going back over the components that were left very open-ended, I think would be the best way to put it? And there's a way to button those up for us? Because I think there were a lot of gaps. We said if it came back over, we wanted to save this pocket and dress it more in this pocket. And so, if there was a way that she could encompass maybe just a little bit of information, understanding it's already been published, so there's no attachment. But, I certainly, and ahead of Tuesday's meeting, I will have questions prior to accepting the budget personally.
Yes, Dr. James, we can provide that. We can be prepared, she can be prepared to provide that information to you all Tuesday evening, and maybe even before, so...
Well, 11 o'clock, the tentative budget?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Or, evening, yeah, Tuesday.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
During the special board meeting.
Thank you. That would be helpful just to put at ease some of the questions and requests that we had made. Yesterday, we saw information come out about open houses. I emailed Mr. Christian back to thank him for the much more timely delivery of information. I do think there are some lingering questions about the way the information is in there. I received personal questions from community members, myself. I actually had my own questions and called my school because I wasn't quite sure which one was which. Because the way it's laid out, I think, is a little confusing. So, I was just hopeful that we could potentially have, because the information's now public, maybe Sky Alerts could go out from our schools to clarify the information. I know it seems a little early, but we released the information early, which is wonderful so people can plan. So, if there was a way that we could make sure that, because it kind of looks like Forest has like a two-day, like a 10-hour orientation for everyone. I don't think that's the intention, but that's kind of the way it looks. Specifically for Madison Street, I was confused about which day was Kinder, which day was this. And so, if maybe Sky Alerts could go out from schools to kind of clarify the information and reinforce that it is publicly available, I think that that would be wonderful. I'm really looking forward to opening our two new schools and seeing those campuses function. I was going to ask Ms. Usher today, but one of the questions I had is, what, when, is Ross Prairie done?
The, the teachers are planning on moving in on July 29th.
Okay. So, that's next. That's, okay, in essentially a week?
Yes. I'm looking-
So, is Ross Prairie done?
The scheduled date of completion, and I don't have it in front of me, but from what I can recall, is July the 31st.
The substantial completion?
For the substantial completion.
Is it going to be substantially complete in two weeks? Because I have heard a wide variety of concerns.
I, I think what we have to go on is the last notification that we received, and that was July 31st for the substantial completion.
Okay.
I am verifying that date, but I believe it was the 31st.
I, understanding everyone is working diligently, but I do think that maybe just having a follow-up from Ms. Usher to confirm, we've gotten lots of Osceola Middle School updates, which has been wonderful, and staying on that timeline. So, if there was a way to potentially give us an update, seeing as we are three weeks out from the start of school essentially, right? Three weeks out from the start of school?
I have some, I have some dates here for you. So, as of Wednesday, final days for temporary certificate of occupancy and substantial completion. There's a whole list of things, but the final inspection is July 23rd. Completion of playground area with sun shade, August 1st. Completion of sod, August 6th. Furnishings installation is tomorrow, which was July 25th. And then, the principal has coordinated for the staff to begin on July 28th, actually. I said 29th. So, July 28th through August 1st. And teachers will set up classrooms, August 4th through August 8th.
So, just to be clear, the furniture delivery is for the 25th, and the entire school's furniture is being delivered in one day? Which I'm not trying to hound you, Dr. Brewer, but I find it incredibly hard to believe that the entire school's going to be furnished in one day. And so, teachers are supposed to come on their own time, because we're not paying them, on their own time to, on their own time between the 28th and the 1st to set up their classrooms. But, I imagine it has to take days to deliver furniture. And so, I'm just, because our pre-planning report day is the 4th, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I just, we're two weeks away from that essentially. And so, maybe if there was a way we could have an update so that we could reassure the community where we are with the project, that would be helpful for me as I've received communication from community members, just so that we have a standard expectation and narrative. I think that that would be helpful. So... Other than that, I don't really have anything else to add. I'm looking forward to school getting started and returning to visiting schools and seeing some of our new leaders in new places, and just watching us continue to flourish. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. As previously stated, I wanted to see if the Board was in consensus for us to have during our work session on August 7th, an agenda item to discuss our legislative priorities, knowing that we would need to get them done that day. So, we need to, we need to start and finish the conversation. Mr. Christian would then have to work overtime. Just kidding, not overtime, but would have to work expeditiously to get us our little papers by the following Monday because Representative Judson Sapp is available to meet with us on August 11th, which is the first day of school, understandably. I do have a couple of times, Board, if you want to choose one, or I am going to make a recommendation. But we could do 10:30, 11:00, or 11:30, or we could do 1:00. And I would prefer the 1:00 time slot. I don't know if that works or doesn't work?
Would it be good for me?
I know.
No.
Okay.
1:00 is an hour ahead of dismissal, and I know I personally plan to participate in some dismissals across the campus, across the district.
But with the other options, Dr. Campbell? Okay. 10:30, 11:00, and 11:30. So, 11:30?
Any of the other times are fine with me. I just think, I, I like to participate in dismissal for the first day of school.
Okay. I, I visit all schools, but I don't necessarily do one or the other. So, if 11:30 works, does that work for you, Board Member Thrower?
On August-
On August 11th, the first day of school. Okay. So, I will tell Tammy Steele that we will do 11:30 on that day. Also, Representative Sapp, and I will reach out to other legislators, but he's the first one to say yes. He would like to participate in Carline that morning at Fort McCoy. So, I don't know if that's something that you'll be able to do with him, Dr. James, but if not, then I wanted to make sure another Board member would be able to be present. Do you think you can do Fort McCoy? They start at 8:00 a.m.
Um, I mean, yeah, I can make, I mean, I need to talk with, please just forward me the communication and I'll have a conversation with him. And if I can't make it happen, I'll forward it to somebody else.
Understood. Okay. So, I will communicate with Tammy and let her know that you will be the point person on Fort McCoy. And they probably need to be there at, say, for Carline, if they start at 8:00, Carline, 7:15 or 7:13? 8:00, Carline 7:15 or 7:30?
15.
Is it 7:15 or 7:30? I'm looking, 7:30? Okay, so I'll tell them to be there at 7:30 at Fort McCoy, and if other legislators say they wanted, I, I know I've done that in the past with Senator Perry and others, I'll let you guys know, but he's just the first one that has alerted me to that.
If you find out, if you, if you find out that people are going to attend, you may wish to contact Fort McCoy and make sure that they have a reserved parking space?
Absolutely, we'll, we'll take care of all that. I wanted to first see if board members were going to be available and, yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely communicate with Fort McCoy. I've already spoken with one of their assistant principals about it. We will be meeting with Representative Sapp at his office, which is in the 25th Avenue governmental complex. So that will be the 11:30 time slot at his office. If something changes, that'll let you know.
Calendar invite, or is Ms. Martinez going to send it?
I want to confirm with Tammy if, once that happens, I'll send to Ms. Martinez the details and we can get a calendar invite for everyone. Okay, that is the primary business. And then the other things I alluded to, letting you know of meetings that I would not be able to attend, July 29th is a special board meeting to hold the, our, our first budget hearing. I will not be able to be physically present for that meeting. I want to make sure that at least three of you can be. If I need to drive an hour and a half back, I can, but as long as three of you are going to be here, I can, July 29th is that date?
It's on the calendar.
It's on the calendar, yes. I mean, if, if I'm needed physically, again, I can drive back and forth if I have to, but I would prefer not. And then the other date, I always tell publicly the dates I'm not going to be present, is September 9th. I can be, that is a traditional board meeting. I will be able to be there telephonically, but I will be in Washington, D.C. during the COSPA Federal Advocacy Conference, and I think it's a really good time to be in D.C. talking about education and from the state of Florida's perspective. So I will be advocating for us in that capacity, but that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, and yep, another grateful day, and it's becoming very clear to me that we are continuing to accelerate towards, you know, leaving our stated legacy of success. I think that former Superintendent, you know, Dr. Gullett wrangled a lot of big things to put some things in place, and that we'll continue to see the benefit of that as we continue to, to move forward. So it's exciting, and it would be my hope and prayer that when I leave this seat, that whoever takes it will feel like they're coming into a seat where there was, you know, passion to move this district forward in action and continue to, to build on that. I believe that's what we're all here for and, and what we're all striving for. So, good morning. The, the one thing that I had on my mind was regarding graduations. I think we made it clear as a board that we really don't want to have what happened this year with having graduations on the same day. You know, there's just so many reasons for, that make that just so hard and, and for all the reasons we talked about. So I am glad that there's a big focus on making sure that our graduations occur on separate days. One of the linchpins in this conversation is, is World Equestrian Center. They simply have got to get back to us on, on dates. And the other thing that is on my mind, because it, it makes it difficult to schedule the other ones without knowing when, when theirs are. So the other thing that's on my mind is that, oh gosh, seven years and then plus having two kids that graduated from Vanguard. I have attended a lot of graduations at the Livestock Pavilion for Vanguard specifically, and I really can't say that there's been problems, difficulties, lack of dignified appearance, anything along those lines. And when I speak to my constituents in that area and know that I have constituents in that area that literally are able to walk to graduations with their families, it is a centrally located area for that school. Vanguard does not have a stadium, and while some thought it was a great idea for Vanguard to have a stadium, the community came out loud and clear and said very much that they're missing the traditions that Voto Cali used to be and that they wanted to continue to have their football games at, at Booster, but in the meantime, Booster needs a lot of refreshing, shall we say. I am very concerned as a board member about supporting a graduation for any school, especially Vanguard, at Booster at this time. We got and continue to get notifications every football season about the plumbing backing up, only four bathrooms, walking across dirt parking lots when it's pouring down rain, you know, just multiple, multiple issues. Booster's not ready for primetime. I am really looking forward to the presentation about the future plans for Booster, because I think they're going to be really exciting and something that the community has made loud and clear that they want to see happen. But at this time, I would ask that we, as a board, do our best to pump the brakes a little bit and punt it back to the schools, the high schools, where they deserve the autonomy as the school leaders to present a plan that makes sense for where they're, where they want their graduations to be held and the, you know, how they're going to meet the costs and how we can help support that. So that is my ask today. I, I truly believe that if Vanguard has given the opportunity to share what they can do to continue to enhance an already good thing, that it will be very good for that Vanguard community. So I welcome your feedback.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. You want to tap comment now?
Please.
Okay. Sure, go ahead, Dr. Brewer is leaning forward.
Just want to share that August 21st is the work session where we're going to have the conversation about the Booster Stadium plans or recommendations or ideas that the committee has been discussing for a few months now. I also, if we want to now or later, I can talk through the August 7th work session items to know if you want to add your topic to it, but I can share that later.
Yeah, I think we have to add. Yeah, we, we have to. If we're going to have a meeting with a representative four days later, we don't have a choice.
I will add that to our agenda.
Perfect, sorry. Sorry to like put us all on the spot, but yeah.
All of what I felt was head and eyes of agreement to what I shared about Vanguard specifically, and having their graduation continue at Livestock Pavilion for this coming year at least, based on whatever Vanguard can share with us to assuage any of the concerns that the board had. I didn't have any particular concerns, you know, I haven't missed a graduation, it's, it's flowed very smoothly. There was some talk about maybe other enhancements that could be done, but I guess what I'm really looking for is consensus from the board to give Dr. Brewer and her staff the opportunity to go back to Vanguard and say, hey, you know.
So if we're having open discussion, my, my concern, and again, you, you weren't at the two prior ones, so my concern is all the kinks that we had with North Marion and Lake Weir, by the third day, Vanguard's went off without a hitch. So I can assure you, there were significant challenges. Safety, sound, just immense amounts of challenges in the two days prior to Vanguard. So I completely respect that the Vanguard community is in full support of having their beautiful graduation that they experienced, but I bet North Marion and Lake Weir communities are looking for alternatives, because it was atrocious. And so, but, but I'm saying, if Vanguard's had have been first, they might not have felt the same way that you're feeling right now. I, I could be wrong, again, that's all, you know, we don't know that, but, no, I mean, I'm just saying, we don't know that they would have had the same challenges. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns, we don't know. But that, that was a, a very unique experience this year for both of those graduations to be as challenging as they were.
Well, and personally, I've been underwhelmed by, by Booster since I, I didn't grow up here, so I never experienced, I think I went to one of my husband's cousin's graduations at Booster Stadium right after we got married, and I just remember being like, wow, this is unique, growing up in Orange County, doing it in the Amway. It was quite a different experience. So, you know, but okay, and so as a board member now, for three years, I have had my own unique thoughts on the experience. But we're having a work session on this in August, and we're going to talk all about it, so that's probably like a more appropriate time to dig into it. I appreciate your thoughts, and I think that, I, I think there is a huge level of principal discretion for graduations, but I also think that we, as the elected officials, represent Marion County, and that did not represent me at all. It was, if there was a word worse than atrocious, I would love to find it. So we could do a quick synonym search, but I was flabbergasted. So whatever we have to do to not repeat this year is worth it to me, because that cannot happen again, so.
Okay, I really would like to wait for our, our work session, see what comes forward, and then, you know, move forward from there.
Sure, and I, I understand completely everything that's been shared, and if it was, if that had been the experience of Vanguard, then I would have not opened this conversation. All I can say is that in the nine graduations for Vanguard that I have attended through the years, and that's a pretty good record, those things haven't happened. For whatever reason, they seem to have it down. And I don't think through those nine years that they've always been the third one of the lineup to graduate. It's just that they've managed to, to, to perfect it and deserve the opportunity to at least have, be able to bring forward a plan, because your fears are my fears, you know, same thing. And they're valid, 100% valid. So I look forward to continuing the, the conversation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share what I did.
Thank you. Is that, is that all you have?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Thrower. I appreciate that, all the conversation that you brought forward. Where I just have a few, few items. Just a reminder that the prayer walk is August 3rd. If you haven't registered and you need to, and you'd like to, please just reach out to me, I'll be happy to send the QR code to you. I'm looking forward to that time. I hope I. Is everybody coming next Tuesday to Bellevue on the rise for the school? Okay, you will not be there?
I will not.
I see Dr. Campbell nodding. Oh, you can't go either?
No.
Okay, all right, well, Dr. Campbell, I look forward to seeing you next Tuesday morning at 8:00 at Bellevue High School. So I'm looking forward to the message that Dr. Brewer is going to share with us that morning. I also wanted to do a quick shout-out to Kevin and his team. They were down a few people this morning, so he came over and whispered in my ear, which you know is a dangerous thing to whisper, whisper to me, because I can't usually hear, but he said he was, several people were out, and so they were down and operating on a minimal crew this morning. So just want to thank him and his team for the extra effort and everything went off without a hitch, pretty much. So that is all I have for you. If we have no other comments, no further business, we will adjourn the work session at 12:42. Thank you, Board.